And I'm grateful that we're going to be doing some proclamations and recognitions a little bit to acknowledge them. But we're gonna, today's invocation will be given by Father Shane Baxter, St. Anthony's Basilica pastor and rector. If everyone would please silence your cell phones, and if you so choose, please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we pray for all the members of the Beaumont City Council and all other officials who offer themselves in service to our city. May they be enabled by your powerful protection to perform their duties with honesty, charity, and ability, always seeking the common good. Amen.
The United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
May I have roll call, please?
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Neal.
Present.
Councilmember Duryo.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Shaw.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel Ebsen.
All right, today we have two proclamations and one recognition and three presentations. First, we're going to do a proclamation recognizing the month of March as American Red Cross Month. And accepting will be Ms. Kimberly Klein, Executive Director of American Red Cross Southeast Texas, Southeast Deep East Texas Chapter. And it will begin, if you would come through here first, I'll give you the proclamation, then we'll allow time for comments.
Mayor and Council, thank you so much for putting this on your agenda today. I am Kimberly Klein. I'm the new Executive Director, one month in, of the Southeast Deep East Texas Chapter. Our chapter here in Southeast Deep East Texas has 17 counties in it. We go from Orange all the way up to Shelby County, over to Polk County, even into Chambers. I am thankful for March being Red Cross Month because what it does is it allows us to honor those who work for our life-saving mission. They take their compassion, they put it into action, and they help our constituents. So what we're striving to do now is try to build up our volunteer base, as many people as we can get to help out in all avenues. That way, our constituents all across our 17-county area are taken care of when disaster hits. And we all know we're pretty good at that as individuals, but if our individuals will take the resources that the American Red Cross has to offer, we can really help our constituents out. So thank you so much again for having me today. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Now next, something happened on March 8th, 10 days ago, right? Am I right on that date? Because several of us got to be in San Antonio, and some of us were spectators, but there was a basketball game for state championship, and our Westbrook Brook Bruins were there. And boy, was it a great game, and they won. They are the state championship, so they're not just the pride of the state. And so we're going to present y'all with a proclamation. I know there's something a little later this week as well, but we would love for you all to come up, certainly the players, the coach, and any of the administration that would like to come up. Come on up. We appreciate y'all being here.
All ready? Get you all in. Everybody looking? One, two, three. More, one, two, three.
First, we want to give honor to God. And you're looking at an incredible group of young men, a great coaching staff, you know what I'm saying? It wasn't the Coach Mike T Show. Everybody came together and did this. And we appreciate the city recognizing these young men because they put in the work and they did something that's never been done on the west side of town. We proud of you. I know I love you guys, and I'm forever grateful. And we're grateful for y'all having us here and recognizing these young men and these incredible coaches. Thank you.
Beaumont loves y'all too. Now, I don't know that Richland Hills Place loves y'all as much, but we love y'all. Sure, yeah.
Coach Thomas, before you leave, before you leave, I just want to say one thing. I want the whole community to know one thing that I respect so much about this coach. Before he even got the head coaching job on last year, he brought all these young men to a Bible study that I was able to be a part of in America's presence. And that showed me the foundation and what you stood for, that you instilled in our young men. I appreciate you, we love you, we thankful for you, we can't wait to celebrate y'all even more. But I just want to highlight that that foundation means a lot to us, and thank you for that, all right?
And at this point, we're going to also be recognizing somebody I don't want to ever have to be in a ring with. So, and this is, we're going to be recognizing Mr. Quentin Thomas Jr., three-time Junior Golden Glove Champion and National Junior Olympics Bronze Medalist. That is incredible. We're going to grab a picture, if you would.
Yeah, this is a little easier. Okay, y'all ready? One, two, three. Got it.
Invite comments now, please.
Yes. Once again, thanks for having us today. So I'll take this time, once again, to thank you guys for recognizing the accomplishment of Quinn Thomas Jr. and also provide some education of what all went on. First off, Lionhearted, a nonprofit based in Jefferson County, incorporates service youth and low-income families in and around Jefferson County. With our volunteer unpaid staff, our focus is youth development while building family and community cohesion. Introducing an active lifestyle through health and fitness to combat the nation's highest period of adolescent obesity. Operating under the guidelines of the United States Olympic Training Center, USA Boxing Safe Sport, all of our staffs are registered United States Olympic and Paralympic coaches and officials. We've been operating in Beaumont since November of 2021. All right. So a little history, all right? Most will call the Golden Age of Boxing between the years of 1939 and 1968. I was born in 83, so I had to research that. When I say research, I mean Google. So with the most importance of 1939 being the beginning of the National Golden Gloves, which most people are familiar with. What Quentin Thomas Jr. won was the National Silver Gloves of America, which was started in Illinois in 1967 by Frank Hayes and Frank Donatos. Created for males ages eight to 17 years old, with female boxers being included in 2019. The National Silver Gloves has had a national tournament every year since its inception. In the beginning, the National Silver Gloves moved from city to city every two years. In 1992, the Silver Gloves partnered with Ringside, and they will have sponsored the National Silver Gloves Tournament in Kansas City, Missouri ever since. So we just competed in the 58 National Silver Gloves, meaning there hasn't been any breaks, pandemics, national disasters, every year there's been one. Quinn Thomas started boxing at the age of 10, developing a love for the sport and passion for competition and challenges. He is currently ranked number six under the United States Olympic Committee, USA Boxing. These rankings are used every four years to invite the top eight amateur boxers per weight class to compete in the United States Olympic Trials in preparation for the Summer Olympic Games, which is the biggest sporting event in the world. These rankings also provide national and international opportunities, financial stipends, scholarships, medical, and dental coverage. With nothing else to say, I would like to introduce you to our 2025 National Silver Glenn Thomas Jr.
Thank you. I just want to thank y'all for recognizing me, and I promise I will continue to keep up the good work. Thank you.
Do you want to get a picture? Yeah, but we didn't get the family. We didn't get the family. Yeah, absolutely. One more, one more, Tracy. You might get on this side.
Yeah, bounce it out a little bit.
There we go.
Maybe this one just scooch a little bit, a little bit more this way. Okay, everybody, that looks better. Perfect. Okay, ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Perfect. Congratulations.
And next, the lady that's been behind the camera this morning taking pictures, our communication update from our Director of Communications, City of Beaumont.
That's a tough act to follow. Made me feel a little emotional. Congratulations. Well, in this week's announcement, city officials just returned from Austin, where they attended Golden Triangle Days. Leaders from Beaumont and surrounding cities were able to advocate for Southeast Texas legislative priorities covering important issues like infrastructure, economic development, public safety, and workforce growth. The council's newly approved legislative agenda was also presented to state lawmakers to address the region's most pressing needs. The city's youth basketball league officially wrapped up on March 1st with a great season. 24 teams, 300-plus kids, seven action-packed games plus playoffs, with over 500 fans packing the Sterling Pruitt Center. There were also cheerleaders and dance teams helping to keep up, or keep the crowd pumped. A big thanks to our community liaison, coaches, parents, volunteers, and performers who made the season a success. With basketball season behind us, get ready to run, jump, and compete with Beaumont's Track Club. Stop by the Sterling Pruitt Activity Center on Gulf Street to register kids 5 to 18. Registration runs March 31st to May 9th, and we encourage families to take advantage of this opportunity for the youth to participate in a great athletic program. If you're a bookworm, this one's for you. It's time for the Friends of the Library Annual Book Sale. The event at the downtown library on Pearl Street allows you to purchase, with cash only, an entire bag of books for just $2. It's the best deal you can find. Friends of the Library members can stop by this Friday, March 21st, between 3:00 and 6:00 p.m. The general public is invited Saturday, March 22nd, between 9:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. I'm losing my voice, and you don't want to miss out on this. A new med unit is being added to the Beaumont Fire Department's fleet. It's a tradition for new med units to be blessed by a member of the clergy before going into use. So you can join us as Bishop David Toops of the Catholic Diocese of Beaumont blesses med unit number seven at Fire Rescue Station 7 on McFadden Avenue, March 27th at 2:00 p.m. And last but definitely not least, we're excited to announce Amalia Molly Villarreal has been named the permanent Public Works Director for the City of Beaumont. Molly has been a dedicated member of our team for over 14 years as a water utilities engineer, the city engineer, assistant public works director, interim public works director, and now the official public works director. Molly is a proud graduate of Lamar University, so right here she got her education, with a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering, and currently serves on the Lamar University Civil and Environmental Engineering Advisory Council. So please join me again in congratulating Molly on a well-deserved promotion, and that's all for this week's segment.
All right, Councilman Turner, you had something to that?
Yes, before we dismiss, Mayor, thank you for giving me the time. Quentin, I just wanted to say something to you as a father. Often, we have times where in our community, we looked upon as negative things with our kids, that could be getting into anything. And for you to come and be in your son's life with your family and do the things you're doing, I want to let you know you appreciate it. We need more fathers doing what you're doing, and thank you. I want to say that on a dies in front of everybody because I hope this encourages more fathers to be involved and be involved in their kids' life in a positive way. So thank you, man. We appreciate you.
All right, we've been talking about great things happening, and now we've got Mr. Kenneth Coleman, City of Beaumont Health Director, coming to talk about, give us an update on the measles outbreak.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, coworkers. I also have with me Mayor Alexander, who is my clinical nurse manager. So she manages all the clinical areas. But to give you an update, a public health update on the measles outbreak that's occurring in, well, it started in west Texas, but it's moving around. Just to give you a timeline, the first case was confirmed in January the 28th in Gaines County, which is around the Lubbock area. And I checked it before I left to come here, and currently, we're up to 279 cases. That covers 11 counties. Let me go to the next slide. And we see that in his neighboring state, New Mexico. So currently, right now, in New Mexico, there's 38 cases and growing. What's not up here, the city of Houston had just reported a third confirmed case of measles that's linked to international travel. But one thing that all these cases have in common is that in west Texas, of the 279 documented cases, 277 is unvaccinated. In New Mexico, out of the 38, 35 is unvaccinated. The three confirmed cases in Houston is unvaccinated. So that's the common theme with all these cases. Also, there's measles cases that's been reported in California, Alaska, Florida, Georgia, Kentucky, New Jersey, New York City, Pennsylvania, Rhode Island, Washington, Vermont, and now Oklahoma. And the Oklahoma cases is linked to the west Texas cases. Next slide. So this is CDC's definition of measles. Measles is considered probably the most contagious infections of all infections. As you can see, if 10 people was exposed to a measles case, if 10 unvaccinated people were exposed to measles, nine of those people would test positive. That's just how infectious and contagious this virus is. But to make it even, if I can use the term worse, is that a person that has measles, if they leave a room, that measles is still lingering for another two hours. So in other words, you can come in a room behind someone who was infected with measles two hours later, and if you're unvaccinated, you could test positive. So it's one of the most contagious infections that we do have. Next slide. So how is it spread? Measles is spread through air droplets. In other words, if I had measles, the fact that I'm up here talking, I'm releasing those droplets into the air, so everyone in this room has been exposed to measles. So if you're in this room right now and you are unvaccinated, there's a great chance that 90% of you would test positive, as well as your droplets landing on surfaces. And that's why we still promote and highly promote sanitizing. You know, we heard that a lot during COVID, right? But we still need to sanitize surfaces because, again, it can last for at least two hours after that person really leaves the room. Measles is most contagious four days before the rash appears and four days after. And so most people realize something's wrong when they see the rash. But the rash may happen seven to 14 days after the infection. So again, four days before the rash appears and four days after where you're most infectious. Next slide. Signs and symptoms. Because as we can see, high fever, cough, runny nose, red, watery eyes. In southeast Texas, we call that allergies, right? And so, as we see with a lot of infections, the symptoms are similar at the very beginning. And see, two to three days after that, you might develop white, tiny spots inside the mouth. But again, most people get concerned when they see the rash. But at that point, wherever you've been, you've exposed all those people. Because remember, it's four days prior to the rash that you're most infectious. So the rash, again, is three to five days after the fever, after the cough, after the runny nose. You may see the rash five days later. Next slide. Complications. You can see, it can cause you to be in the hospital, pneumonia, encephalitis, death, and complications during pregnancy. And with the cases I reported, there's been two deaths. One in west Texas in a school-aged child, and the one in New Mexico was in an adult. So we've already had two deaths. And the reasons for most people reporting to the hospital in west Texas is dehydration and respiratory distress. And currently, in west Texas, we have 38 that's currently in a hospital. And two in New Mexico, and of that 38 in west Texas, there's two children that's on the ventilator. Next slide. Prevention. The best way, the most sure way of preventing measles is getting vaccinated. And I know there's a lot of information that's going around now about a healthy diet, taking vitamin A, exercising, all that's great, all that's wonderful, all that is what public health promotes, but that will not prevent you from catching measles. The most sure way is the vaccine. And the vaccine has been proven, as you can see on the slide, to prevent measles 97% of the time if you get the two required doses. Next slide. And this is just some of the infections. What you see on my left is vaccine-preventable illnesses, right? And what you see on my right is the result of people not being vaccinated if they were to come in contact with one of these vaccine-preventable illness. Next slide. This is what's concerning to public health. In Texas, you have exemptions. You have medical reasons to be exempt. You have religious reasons to be exempt. And most recently, you have what they call the conscientious exemption, just a matter of conscience, just a matter of I just don't want my child to be vaccinated. And as you can see at the bottom, back in 2000, measles was declared officially eliminated in the U.S. thanks to strong vaccination rates. But because we're making it a lot easier, or we're giving families more choices, more and more families are opting out of childhood-preventable vaccines. And it's gotten worse since post-COVID. Because of, we've already seen deaths, and I got this quote, and I think it's so powerful. "The exemption is a very simple process that has dire consequences." So public health, we're encouraging you to get vaccinated. The vaccines are proven to be effective. The vaccines are proven to be effective regardless of what you may hear or what you may read. Vaccines are proven to be effective, and vaccines do not cause autism. Next slide. Questions. I like that button, and I have one that I'm wearing. Just always remember, public health is your invisible guardian. When you live in a community that you're not experiencing outbreaks like goes on in other communities, be sure to thank your public health department because there's a lot of work that's going on behind the scenes. It's a lot of contact investigation that's going on behind the scenes. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm willing to answer.
That vaccine, is it part of the vaccines that are given to infants in their first couple of years?
Yes. It's required to, well, it used to be mandatory to attend public school. You have to have certain vaccines. But again, with the exemptions that's available, and exemption is a simple process. You just go to the state website, you print out a form, an affidavit, you fill it out as the guardian, you get it notarized, you submit it back to the state. It takes about a two-week process for them to review the form, and once it's approved, that exemption is good for two years. Very simple process.
Well, thank you, Mr. Coleman.
Thank you.
And now we have a presentation from Right Sight. Right
And now we have a presentation from Right Sight, Right Sight Telehealth, Mr. Larry Muzik, is that correct? Did I get his name right? All right. The Right Sight Telehealth representative, and we have Chief Earl White at the podium at this point.
Yes, Ken, it's gonna make it easy for me to follow that. And this is not gonna cost you anything today, okay? Basically, I've challenged my staff and myself to always bring something back that can benefit our citizens as far as healthcare. And we've contacted Right Sight. Max Nguyen and Chief Singler went on EMS conference and were able to contact this particular company. And I'd like Dr. Kavispar to come up also because he's on board with what we're presenting today. So I'm gonna turn it over to Larry and Clayton and let them present, make the presentation. And please, I encourage you to ask a large amount of questions as to how we're gonna roll this service out, in addition to what we're already gonna be doing with the Good Sam app.
I guess it's a good afternoon, or, yes, it is, afternoon. And do I need to plug in if I need to push up there? Do you guys want me to?
Yeah, that'd be great.
I need my glasses. I don't know where I put my glasses, and I'm inoperable without them.
Looks like you're safe.
There we go. Okay. All right, I am plugged in. Should it just pop up, or? There we go. Fantastic. Well, gentlemen, I'll give you kind of a high-level view of who we are. And at any point in time during this presentation, you guys have questions, I ask you to ask it at any point in time. In general, our work is done primarily with EMS partners. Myself, I'm Clayton Wahlberg, I'm the Chief Commercial Officer of Right Sight Health. Very simply, what that means is I oversee all of our interactions and our partnerships with our EMS and fire partners, also with our health plan partners. And we'll talk about why that's important to you guys in a minute. The overall thesis of Right Sight Health is very simple. About fifty percent of the EMS and nine-one-one calls that are received are non-emergent. So your EMS team is being called out to go engage with individuals, transport them to the hospital for conditions that do not necessitate an ambulance or an ER, could oftentimes be handled in the home, it could be handled at a PCP, it could be handled by a specialist, or it could be handled at an urgent care facility. What Right Sight does is we partner with EMS to provide them a solution in the moment for exactly that. And what you're seeing up on the screen is a real-life example of what happens with our fire department and EMS partners. So in this case, this fire crew has arrived via a nine-one-one call in the home of this individual. The first thing that they typically do is they go through a triage process with that individual to identify, are they emergent? Do they have a high acuity issue or a low acuity issue? So let's assume in this condition, this gentleman has a deeply infected and grown toenail. And we're gonna laugh at that, but we actually get a lot of those phone calls. Or let's say that they have a twisted ankle. So now EMS has arrived on the scene, they've confirmed that this individual has a condition that hurts, but does not necessarily necessitate a transfer in an ambulance to an ER. At this juncture, what they have done is they've said, let's indicate this person is Mr. Jones. Hey, Mr. Jones, while that ankle looks like it hurts pretty badly, don't really think you need to go to the ER today? Would you like to talk to an emergency medicine physician right now on the screen? Our experience in that is most of these patients, between a ninety-plus percent, say, yeah, that'd be great. They're calling nine-one-one for a variety of reasons, which could be health literacy issues, it could be, I don't have a car, it's the only way I can get treatment, I don't have insurance, if I get to the ER, they take care of me. In that case, what has occurred on this screen is, behind that screen, is there is an emergency medicine physician along with a social care navigator that's on that screen talking to Mr. Jones. So the process is quite simple. Actually, this is our entire business model on one slide. So in this case, what's occurred is the ambulance had arrived, the crew had identified this individual as non-emergent, had asked him if they wanted to talk to a physician right now, and they said yes. That ninety-nine percent represents the number in aggregate of all individuals that we've engaged that say yes. What occurs, it's about a fifteen-second window when our physician is on board on the screen along with a social navigator, and the process starts. The physician first and foremost does one thing, they de-escalate the situation. No matter what the condition, if you called nine-one-one, it's important to you. So they're seeking to identify what's wrong and de-escalate and assure that person that could be well cared for. Then they're confirming via triage that that individual is non-emergent. Let's make sure that they don't need an ambulance. Let's make absolutely sure that they don't need to go to the ER. Because if they do, we're gonna recommend that that's where their best side of care is. What occurs during that triage process is we've identified, yes, Mr. Jones, it looks like a pretty bad twisted ankle, I don't think you need the ER, but I do think you need, I think you're gonna need an X-ray. So I tell you what, how about we found an urgent care center that's three miles away, how about we get you an appointment to that urgent care center and get you down there to get that looked at? Well, sir, I don't have a car, that's why I called nine-one-one. Fantastic. That's why the navigator's on the phone, that navigator has actually found a ride for you. It's gonna be a red Ford Explorer, Oscar's gonna be the driver, Uber, it'll be here in seven minutes. Your appointment's at 2:00 PM in thirty minutes in the urgent care center. When you finish that appointment, call us, we'll schedule you a ride back. If there's medications that are necessary, we will stop by the pharmacy and pick those up for you. And once you return home, we're gonna call and check in and ensure that you have all the tools necessary to meet your clinical care plan. So in that case, for example, on a twisted ankle, oftentimes an ace bandage might be requested. Sir, were you able to obtain that bandage? No. As you remember, I do not have a car. Fantastic. We're gonna have one delivered to you, it'll be there in thirty minutes. So the social care aspect of what we do is probably the most important piece, is the doctor, sorry, the screen went. The doctor maintains a supercritical role in the clinical aspect of it. The navigator is the heart and soul of who actually takes care of this patient and ensures that their care can be managed in the community, and that we identify any social barriers that are typically the root reason why they're calling nine-one-one for non-emergency issues to begin with. That process lasts for seven days where we're outreach-ing that individual, which may mean that we need to get them to a specialist, maybe they said they need to see an orthopedic after this, just to double-check to make sure that there's not any issues with ligaments or tendons in the ankle. We will work to schedule that with that patient as well. If we identify any other social issues that they need rides for that, we will provide those. Those are all done at our cost. For up to fourteen days, we receive inbound calls. During that time, the purpose of us is to identify anything that that patient needs and hand them off to the appropriate resources. So as we're talking to Mr. Coleman, we address the idea that there's a number of public health initiatives that you guys fund for individuals especially that are uninsured. Can we connect them to the proper resources that help them do that as well? So that is the high-level overview of what we do. I'm happy to open up for questions or get into some of the details of our results or history, but I'll take a breath.
Who pays for all of this?
That's normally the first question. The health plans do. So our model is we engage with health plans. And if you think about this very simply, if I have a cold and I take an ambulance ride and I arrive at the ER, there's a propensity for me to incur a cost upwards of $5,000 as opposed to if you engage with Right Sight in partnership with our EMS partners and we treat at home, it probably costs a health plan about $180. So it's a cost savings to the health plans, and we incur all of our revenue from health plans.
So once again, who pays for this?
The health plans.
What, like, what health plan?
United, Humana, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas, Molina, Centene.
What's our uninsured rate in Beaumont?
I'm gonna guess, if yours falls Texas standards, about twenty percent, twenty to twenty-five.
Uninsured?
Correct. So we do maintain a foundation, so we see all patients. So that's an important piece to see. Similar to how EMS operates, EMS does not ask anybody, are you insured, before it comes in the ambulance. They arrive with a level of health equity that's a hundred percent. We operate in parity with that. So we will see all patients, insured or uninsured.
So if the patient does not have insurance, you won't send the bill to the city?
Is it covered under Medicare and Medicaid?
It is.
Councilman Getz?
Are you familiar with the Good Sam app?
I am.
So can you compare this and contrast this with the Good Sam app? Because we've been looking forward to that being rolled out for a while, and it's taken a bit of time.
Yeah. So it's a great question. San Antonio Fire is our largest partner in Texas. San Antonio Fire is one of the earlier innovators and users of Good Sam. What they utilize it is as a secondary term, or a secondary tool to actually triage the patient out of dispatch, meaning they don't have to be there. They can actually get vitals, they can understand the condition of the patient. What it does, it is actually further enhances our ability to identify someone's non-emergent. So when San Antonio Fire passes that to us, our physicians have a deeper level of knowledge when they're engaging with that person. So I would say it's beneficial, but it's also additive to our ability to deliver the best possible care for your members or for your patients in your community.
So what I'm hearing from you is that you would be the first contact with the patient, but then if we also have the Good Sam app incorporated, it will actually allow you to do objective clinical findings through their proprietary functions?
That's correct. With the one difference is if you look up here on the piece, you'll see out of dispatch, my mouse actually works. We can be initiated out of dispatch, which is, there we go, which will be directly out of your nine-one-one center. So a patient or a member of your community calls nine-one-one, they go through a process once they've hit the EMS system where you're identifying and creating a code of the level of their acuity. Good Sam's typically used during that period of time. Once that acuity's been identified that it's eligible for Right Sight, then we are activated at that point in time. So I would say it's on the front end, but yes, it does help with our clinical objectivity.
Councilman Turner?
At the beginning of your presentation, you said, on average, how many people actually call and is none emergency? I think you had said a percentage normally on average.
Yeah, nationally, it's about fifty percent, which is mind-boggling. But I think in many of our states, especially as we get in, or in many of our, we operate in three states, but many of our states and some of our communities, we see the number as high as sixty percent.
And do you have any kind of success rate situations, scenarios in other cities where you've seen it kind of reduce the, you know, volume of our ambulances being kind of tied up?
We absolutely have, that's actually. So this gives you an example of, this is numbers just from this year pulled in Texas or for the last twelve months. So we think about every time EMS engages with us, we call it an activation. So that means somebody in dispatch has spoken to a member of your community and identified that they were non-emergent, or your crew on site has. And they've asked that patient, would you like to speak to an ER doctor right now? And they've said yes. So that eight thousand up on the screen, our results on that is eighty-seven percent of the individuals that have said yes, we've been able to divert them towards alternate sites of care, which could be in their home, treat them right there in telehealth, they never have to leave the house. It could be an urgent care facility, it could be at a PCP, it could be in an FQHC that helps fund, helps support the uninsured as well. Does that answer your question?
Yes, this was the data I was looking for.
This has been very helpful. I would love for Chief and Dr. Kavispar to come up, and I think Councilman Nield has a question, too. So you mentioned using Uber, one of these other ride shares to get people to the hospital or to the doctor's offices, wherever they need to go. What about cities that don't have active ride shares?
Yeah. In cities that don't, we have to get more creative. So a number of the health plans actually have what's called NEMT transport, which is non-emergency medical transport, and it's a planned benefit. So this is for the insured. In that case, we're able to actually utilize those services and not have to rely on Uber or an on-demand call. In other places, we've had to get more creative. So as we get into deep west Texas, for example, you're not gonna get an Uber to show up in nine minutes. But there may be a senior citizen facility that has three vans that sits stagnant for eighty percent of the year, and we can pay Billy who drives the van forty dollars to come pick them up at any given time on demand.
We, I don't think we currently have active ride share in Beaumont.
We actually do have Uber, I used it recently.
We have Uber in Beaumont?
Yes. Yeah, I was getting my tires changed and I Ubered to the house.
Yeah, I Ubered from Firestone and I Ubered to the airport.
Good to know. Well, and I know, Chief, y'all have been looking at this through, through Good Sam app, and I know Dr. Kavispar is here, too. Y'all feel like this is clearly gonna be a benefit to, because we actually know the level of calls based on our dispatch. So if maybe y'all can speak to that.
I mean, if I may.
Yes, Dr. Kavispar.
Obviously, I've been involved with the city of Beaumont now for twenty years, so we've seen the number of nine-one-one calls, how they astronomically have gone up. I mean, we're reaching one of the highest levels. COVID didn't help, and of course, nothing slowed down. One of the things that I know has been brought up here is some of the disgruntlement about, I called nine-one-one and it took a long time, they didn't show up. That's because they're inundated with these calls. So I think if we have the Good Sam and the site right together, I think that's a great combination to reduce some of these lower acuity calls. Because we know firsthand, just looking at the Beaumont EMS data, not even looking at Acadia and the other ones, a good portion of them, at least thirty-five, forty percent of them are non-emergent. Some people just wanna ride, some people just wanna meal, and they'll call nine-one-one. We can't refuse nine-one-one, even if they're a repeat offender. And there are some patients that literally call every week, and we can't say we're not gonna show up because the last twenty times, you know, was cry wolf. So they do show up. So I think in cases like this, and they're in the thousands annually, something like this will definitely alleviate the pressure on the nine-one-one, and they can respond to the patients that critically need our, our help. And I think this is where Good Sam is very good, because as they were presenting, I think the most important part is that initial contact and having the appropriate personnel to do the clinical exam. Because if you have somebody that doesn't really know what they're doing, they may miss something. Even an ingrown toenail could be a septic patient. So this is where the Good Sam is very important because their level of expertise is much higher. So if they're the first ones to be called in and asked the appropriate questions, then they can decipher, no, this is not something minor, this needs to go to the hospital. So, and then, of course, with the adjunct of the site right, then we can really alleviate a good portion, at least thirty percent of these calls, so our paramedics and firefighters can attend to what's more important.
One thing I want to emphasize is that this is, our citizens are able to get in-home care from a hundred percent board-certified physician in their home, never having to leave their home. And they've agreed, part of their plan is to come in and train our first responders on how to launch Right Sight, actually, from the scene, on either on a device, cell phone, iPhone, Droid, to their physician, or from the patient's phone, and do that transfer of care right there on the scene and never having to sit three or four hours in the emergency room. This is quality care for insured, underinsured, and no insured. There's only four exclusions that, if I'll be, one of them is pregnancy, mental health crisis, in custody police, and in hospital care. You shouldn't be calling Right Sight from the hospital, you're already there. So I think it's a win-win for both the citizens and the city. And again, only increases our service. And again, I want to emphasize, this is for those low-acuity calls, the back pain, I just don't feel well calls, and they can still go to the hospital if they want to be transported by their request.
Well, and I'm assuming by these low-acuity calls, oftentimes, when they get to the hospital, they may sit there for a long time because of the nature of why they're there. So this will probably expedite their care.
Well, the other problem is, as you know, if any of you guys or family members have been to the emergency room, the wait times are crazy because the ER is being used as a clinic. Why are you here? I've had back pain for six months. You don't go to the emergency room for that, right? So if you really look at the ER, I mean, I'm there every day, I'd say twenty, twenty-five percent of the patients there have no business being there, but they have no other place to go. And this is, or they don't have a primary care physician, or I'm out of my medication, so I came to the emergency room. So they basically use the ER for anything and everything, right? So this will also alleviate the wait time in the ER. So when somebody does really need our help, you're not sitting there for eight hours with ruptured appendix because there's twenty people in front of you. because there's 20 people in front of you who could have easily been taken care of in another fashion. So I think this will really help across the board from A through Z.
Yes, Councilman Duria?
Chief, can you explain how the Good Sam and Right Sight, how they work together, how they interact?
Our model is going to be is that they're going to dispatch their call. We can either launch them to Right Sight, or we can launch them to the Good Sam app, which by one of our 505s or clinical in the field. And if it's sent to the Good Sam app in the field, they can still launch them to telehealth, or they could go ahead and transport them to the hospital after evaluating them through Good Sam.
Good Sight.
You're essentially going to have two options here in that if it's launched from dispatch or from out in the field, the physician is still going to be able to see you through your device. If it's launched to the Good Sam app, our clinician is going to be able to navigate and what your need is. It all depends on what your need is. And it may well require transport to the emergency room.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Well, this sounds like it's a force multiplier, much like with, you know, in terms of all of a sudden, it's gonna, people will be able to be treated quicker, but your EMTs and firefighters won't be tied up on scenes that they shouldn't be tied up on. So that for those that need that more urgent care, they're able to receive it quicker. So thank you for the innovative thinking.
Yes.
Yes, anybody else?
Mayor, just considering the world we live in now, I'm assuming that the legal exposure to the city for this is very limited, if any at all.
It comes with a two-year agreement that at any time, both parties can opt out within 180 days. And it comes with a weekly report, monthly report, and quarterly report of how well that the partnership is working.
But then our legal exposure for lawsuit?
No, you were doing it just, talked about launched on the scene. When we forward them to the physician, there's a patient transport aspect of it. Transfer of care, just like you would at the emergency room, which would limit your liability.
Thank you. All right, thank y'all very much.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
All right, for those that are here for the proclamations, recognitions, and presentations, and you would like to leave, now's the time to do so. And certainly thank everybody for coming. And I think most of the people have departed. So I'll give you all a minute. I'd like to remind people at the close of the meeting today, City Council will recess into executive session to consider matters related to contemplated or pending litigation in accordance with Section 551.071 of the Government Code. James Matthews versus City of Beaumont, Texas, calls number A192887. This time, we're going to do public comments. And if any citizen wishes to speak, you may make public comments on the consent agenda. The regular agenda items, 1 through 5, are any other topics. Citizens wishing to speak on items 7 and 8 will be given an opportunity to speak during the public hearing. Item 6 has already been heard in public hearing. Therefore, you cannot speak on that item. The city clerk will call your name when it's your time to speak. When you approach the podium, please say your address, your city and state. You will have three minutes for public comments. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up. I'd like to remind everyone that myself or council cannot respond whenever you're making comments, but someone from the office will be in touch.
Joseph, I think it's Ken Azaro, 3125 College Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Okay, I'm here to sign a work order for repairs on my building on College.
You can speak during public comment, our public hearing.
Yeah, which will be a little bit later when we address the properties.
On item number 10.
I mean, he's on the one where we're amending.
He's at five.
Item five, he's not on the public hearing. And he's just wanting to get in a work program, I think.
Are you not doing a public hearing for those?
So they were instructed to come speak at the public comment section since the public hearing already happened at the previous.
Let's pause the time and give him his time back. I'm sorry. So you can come back to the podium. You get the second try at it. Sorry to break your train of thought there.
Well, that's what I'm here for, is to get the work program, sign the work program.
Thank you, sir. We get the address?
3125 College Street, Beaumont, Texas.
3125 College Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Aaron Reynolds, Jr., 6945 Salida Lane, Beaumont, Texas.
My name is Aaron Reynolds, Jr., 6945 Salida Lane here in Beaumont. I am attempting to complete my development at 3680 Meter Road. I began this development in October of 2021. Even with the setback of my former general contractor, I continued to press on. I filed on their bond, and the fire marshal committed tortuous interference by issuing a stop-work order. I have been battling with the city of Beaumont for almost two years. The fire marshal refused to allow me to protect my investment. You have been given information that shows the collusion with him and the bondsman. I'm requesting a meeting with the members of the council since I'm not permitted to speak in the executive session. I need you to right the wrong that was committed. If you would, listen to the pre-development meeting on March 7, 2024. Read the email sent to me from the city of Beaumont that's included in your package. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
James Callis, 5375 Rosemary, Beaumont, Texas.
Mayor West, men of council, city staff, and all others present. I am James Callis. I'm a lifelong resident of Beaumont. My residential homestead is 5375 Rosemary, and my business homestead is 2485 Magnolia. That's Anna Mia's house. I've been working on that. I would like to say that it has been profitable living in Beaumont. In the early days, I've been self-employed for 50 years now. I left teaching in 1975. I really enjoyed teaching, but I couldn't make it on a teacher's salary there. Postmen were making more money than I was back then. But as a general contractor and all the other things I pursued, I found a decent income. I have to say this, the city is one of the hardest places to work in. This gentleman, I don't know him, but I do know all the different city officials that I've been dealing with at all levels. Most everybody will give me some consideration, but it gets tiring. At 76, I still work very hard. I get up every day. It was 5:00. Now that we're in daylight, so I get up about 6:00, and I bust it every day. My biggest issue, it's harder to recover now. I'm surprised, but I guess that's what comes with aging. But the city red tag program is a failure. I'm going to tell you that now. I think 77 houses are coming up, which that's several million dollars going off the tax rolls. Now, there's a set of apartments that I designed and built in 1982 that are on the red tag program. J-CAD has them for $296,000, and the city's going to tear them down. If that makes sense to anybody, please come and explain it to me. I'll buy you lunch. I do not understand why the red tag program is so detrimental to the city. I see where y'all are wanting affordable housing. Affordable housing means people own the house. They live in it. They have proud of ownership. The other housing that I saw a couple of meetings ago, that's subsidized housing. Beaumont has too much subsidized housing. Enough is enough. I see where two apartment complexes are going to have the same thing. So that's not the same. Affordable housing, these red tag houses can easily be converted. I have saved two red house, two red tag houses, and I have lost one red tag house, one of my favorite. It was a two, it was a story and a half, 1,700 square feet, got hit by a tree. I just could not get to it. My workload is excessive. So please look at the red tag program. Try to make some revisions. Try to give us some ways to continue without a TRO. I've got to go see Judge Bradford on Thursday to get some more time. I'm just about done. The plumbing's been complete, got a windstorm roof. But it's, the codes are enforced too strict here in Beaumont. They need to have, we need more people moving to Beaumont.
Thank you, sir.
Albert Harrison, 1240 Ashley, Beaumont, Texas.
Albert Harrison, 1240 Ash, Beaumont, Texas. Mayor, city council, other city employees, other concerned citizens present. I have two things I wish to voice. One of them I'll be very short on. Back in about 1980-something, city council asked Beaumont PD to see if we had a homeless issue going on. Two weeks later, the city police department came back and told city council, we don't have no homeless problem. We have a transit problem. Two months later, the Homeless McKinney Act was passed by Congress. City of Beaumont said, oh, we have a homeless problem, and set up the homeless shelter at the old fire station. I'm through with that. I'll get comments on that later. The other issue is, as far back as October of last year, in 1,100 block of Forest Street and 1,200 block of Avalon, water leaks were reported. One of them on 1,100 block of Forest Street was not seen about until January or February, when I made a phone call to Mr. Jack Jackson. At that time, crews came out, looked at the problem. And now, today, the water leak is worse than it was in the beginning. I don't understand that, no more so ever. The leaks that was in 1,200 block of Avalon is still there. I don't understand this year. Someone explained to me, I understand that there are many, many, many leaks in this city. So what that tells me, number one, apparently you don't have enough employees to handle problems. Because I couldn't understand how this can go on this way. Back in October, there was a water leak at my property, 1163 Avalon, which is affecting a lot. I asked that the sidewalk be replaced going from the street onto the property. It still has not been done. And that was way back in October as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Winifred Alexandra, 1118 Avalon, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, everybody. Jerome Alexander, 1118 Elton Street, Beaumont, Texas, 777201. Good afternoon, how everybody doing? I'm here on behalf of organization, man, the whole 501(c) program for the homeless and the citizens. I come here today because I want to know why every time beginning of the year start, the homeless already get attacked. And every time they being attacked, wherever they staying, if somebody got some property over here and they letting them stay on the property, keeping it clean, they doing whatever, y'all come run them off. But then y'all don't have nowhere for them to go. It's been years and years we've been sitting back and been watching. All the homeless program, y'all ain't building no shelter. Y'all got three front, something million dollars in American Rescue Act, no structures being built. Last time y'all were talking about the structure, well, besides the new Salvation Army that was built, which y'all deleted some of the beds from the old Salvation when you moved in. And like when I was talking to you, Mayor, the day you was playing about Henry's place. Yo, when the Salvation Army overflow, if nobody volunteer to open Henry's place, it won't be open. So they having nowhere else to go. And I mean, y'all getting all the money. Where's the money going? It's easy to build a mill, a building, to put the people in. I mean, y'all getting the money, but y'all got the money for the shower, I mean, everything, the bill is, the mobile shower from the shower every day. We ain't seen it. I mean, the people really need help. Y'all run them off on Magnolia when I talk to you. They wasn't bothered nobody. They didn't, the people in our community, we weren't complaining about it. It was keeping it clean. Then y'all come run them off. Where they gonna go? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jason Marshburn, 1070 Monterey Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon. The first proclamation I'm very proud of because I am a Bruin, class of 91, so I'm very proud of that. But that's not the reason I came out here for. I wanted to mention, you know, I love Beaumont. There's a couple of good things we have. We have a good fire department, good police department, and I think solid waste is doing a great job. But there is a couple of issues we need to work on in the city. One is making it more business-friendly, like, you know, with code enforcements. And like a lot of other speakers have mentioned before, it's difficult to own a small business in Beaumont. And I discussed this with another council member earlier last weekend, in fact, about the same issue, about how difficult it is with the codes and getting a business going. And I think we need to become a little more business-friendly. The other issue is, and another person to mention this, what I want to see done, you know, we've done a lot of work on pipe bursting and getting the sewers. We still need to work on that. But I'd like to see more replacing these water mains. During the snow event, I think it was like 43 million gallons of water was used in one day, which our capacity is, what, 50 million per day? Something like that. And, you know, people are dripping their pipes, yes, because they can't afford a plumber. But I think most of the waste is the city itself's wasting water. The amount of water leaks, the lack of replacement of water mains, I think this should be a priority in the next few years. You know, instead of band-aiding these water mains, let's go and replace them all. Will save the city a lot more money if we just replace all these water mains and see. Because I see all these water leaks everywhere, and there's still water leak on College. There's water leak, you know, I go around town and find at least 12 or 16 water leaks right now. And, you know, that means, you know, the water mains are not up to snuff anymore. We need to replace those. That should be job one in the next year or two. I'd like to see more projects replacing these outdated water mains. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Gregory Monette, Jr., 3435 Acacia Grove, Conroe, Texas. Sorry.
High City Council. I know I got a Conroe address, but I'm born and raised Beaumont, Texas, South Park, class of 2011, Ozend High School, pretty much. So I'm a residential home builder and developer out of the Dayton, in the Anawak area, in the Houston area. I've seen the need for housing, affordable housing, from afar. And so looking at bringing a couple of affordable development communities coming, residential subdivisions throughout the city. And so I just wanted to introduce myself. Y'all will be seeing my face around a little bit more often. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you for all those that came and made public comment today. Is there a motion in a second of approval of the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
There is a motion in a second for approval of the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Motion is carried, thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor.
We have the reading of item one.
Thank you. Counselor consider resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number four, accept maintenance and authorize final payment to Lopez Utilities Contractor LLC of Houston, Texas, for the West Calder Road Pipe Bursting Project, Washington Boulevard to Baker Road, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number one?
Move to approve.
Second.
Councilman Durio seconded it?
Yes.
All right. There is a motion and a second for the approval of item number one. Is there any discussion? Councilman Turner.
Mr. Manager of staff, can we kind of please explain the process, once the pipe bursting is done and we may go into the streets? Who's responsible for monitoring, making sure it's back in the repair of its original form prior to it being, the work being done? I think we have a few citizens who kind of voiced the concern about, you know, it being returned back to the nature of what it was done prior to the work being done.
Are you talking, so for the pavement, make sure I understand the pavement restoration?
Even if it's a driveway or, you know, who's responsible for kind of putting it back? I got a few emails about the grass being laid back the way it was or the pavement.
It is the responsibility of the contractor. Our inspectors go out there and investigate to make sure that it is complete and in place. If there is a failure, like say the road doesn't hold up, there is a one-year warranty period after the contract is closed out for the contractor to come back out there and make any repairs that are necessary.
Okay. Well, Delaware near All Saints, I know, I've got a few calls about that area, and we can get someone to kind of look at it. It was a little pipe burst and it went on over there, and it's just not as smooth as the original form was when it first was initiated.
Near All Saints?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we'll go check it out.
Any other discussion, questions? All those in favor of approving item number one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number two, please?
Counselor consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to award a contract to C-Tex Construction Corporation of Beaumont, Texas, for Highway one twenty-four, twelve-inch water main replacement from Phelps Road to Downs Road, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number two?
So moved to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number two, is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number three, please?
Counselor consider an ordinance denying Centipoint Energy Resources Corporation proposed rate, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the ordinance.
Is there a motion for item number three?
Move to approve.
Second.
The motion was made by Councilman Durio and then Councilman Phil Shaw seconded it.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number three, is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number four, please?
Counselor to consider an ordinance denying Texas Gas Service Company's proposed rate, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the ordinance.
Would somebody like to make a motion for item number four?
Move to approve.
Is it, anybody like to second?
Second.
We have received a motion and a second for approval of item number four, is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number five, please?
Counselor consider amend an ordinance number twenty-five dash zero one zero, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the ordinance.
Is there a motion for item number five?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number five, is there any discussion? Councilman Turner.
So just, just for the reckoning, the gentleman that came spoke on this item, is it saying, can staff kind of explain what's going on with this, so everybody in the community can understand?
Yes, sir. Thirty-one twenty-five is, the gentleman spoke on that one. They, there was a communication error with staff. He did appear at the last public hearing. He didn't realize he had to speak, but he did come up to the second floor to rectify that, so that's why I'm bringing this back. For thirty-thirty, Terrell, he communicated that he was attempting to handle probate issues, and he also missed the, the meeting last time, also a communication error. For the other two, which is thirty-one oh three Magnolia and forty-eight thirty Rue, those two numbers were relayed incorrectly when they created the ordinance, so they did not, I'm sorry, yeah, so they wanted to enter into the work program, but they did speak at the last council hearing, so you guys did hear them. But the ones that need to be removed from that work program is number twenty-seven and number thirty-seven, that was the one that I communicated by error, and they never spoke on behalf of their property at the last public hearing. So amending for, well, six in total properties.
Thank you. Any other discussion on that? All those in favor of item number five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number six?
Counselor consider request for a specific use permit to allow an artisan office and shop within the CBD, which is a central business district, for property located at four fifty Bowie Street, and it comes with the recommendation of approval with the following conditions. One, construction plans must meet all requirements by Water Utilities for Water and Sanitary Sewer Services, including any requirements of the city's backflow pretreatment and our fault program. Two, construction plans shall comply with all applicable fire and building code requirements. And three, all operations of the business shall remain in compliance with Article twelve dot zero eight of the City of Beaumont Code of Ordinances.
Is there a motion for item number six?
Move to approve with the conditions.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number six, is there any discussion? Councilman Getz.
Mr. Boone, is this building already under construction?
The shop is in the back, yes.
Okay, so this is that metal building that is being constructed downtown?
Yes, sir.
You know, this is the second metal building that has come into the downtown commercial business district within the last couple of years. They really look out of place compared to what the architectural styles is for a lot of our other buildings, and I'm wondering if there is some possibility that we can look at developing some sort of a standard that we might try to encourage people to come downtown. I know Mr. Pettit, I'm glad that they're coming downtown, I respect his business acumen. But when you put these metal buildings downtown, it makes it look like a industrial area instead of the general downtown plan that we're trying to accomplish. And is there some thought being given to looking at developing some sort of standards on this?
I can look into it. I will say, so, to your point, I understand the aesthetics and upholding that downtown, it definitely has an eclectic feel and we should try to maintain that. But I will say oppositely, when you, when you introduce a design overlay, that's another process for a developer to take when they're wanting to come in downtown. You know, a good example is our Oaks Historic District, some of the, some of the homes are amazing out there, they're gorgeous, and we're trying to keep that aesthetic, but it, we do, we do get complaints that, you know, on top of getting a permit, there isn't an additional hoop that they have to go through, or if there's a serious change, you know, that they have to get further approval, which can delay a project by a few weeks. So it's certainly something I can look into, but I do want to keep in mind, as we consider development downtown, that, that would add a layer of review to their building permits.
Got a question on that, Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Neil.
Just back to Councilman Getz's comment, this might be a little bit off topic, but if you start trying to recreate what they built a hundred years ago, you'll never be able to afford to build anything in downtown Beaumont.
Well, Councilmember Neil, I understand that we're not trying to recreate what they built a hundred years ago, because codes have changed and, you know, that's a good thing. But there's ways to build buildings, and I'm thinking of the venue on Calder that's called the Laurel's. They built that to replicate a, a building that could have been built a hundred years ago, it has an aesthetic feel and style to it that is congruent with the old town area. I'm just saying that when you put in a metal building downtown, it's a, it's kind of stark and harsh, and while I'm all for trying to get people to move downtown and both in business and live downtown, I, I think that you could lose some of what you would be trying to get through downtown development if we just allowed a bunch of metal buildings to start cropping up.
Mayor?
If I could just add, we have talked about that over the years, whether or not we should have a architectural review board overlay downtown. Obviously, we never implemented that. Having said that, you know, we have seen this building, we've seen a, it was a law office go up recently that's a metal facade, and so it is something that we may work with our partners at Main Street to see if they could come up with, what are some recommendations? Because I don't think you want to necessarily require that you imitate the architectural of the past, you may want to try to at least encourage that it's compatible or sympathetic with the architecture of what's in place. So it, it's going to take time, but we are going to look into at least coming up with some guidelines, working with Main Street to help us develop those. Whether or not it becomes a full board where, similar to the Oaks Historic District as Ms. Ingman brought up, whether you want that, that would be a different question, but we will certainly look into some guidelines.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Boone.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of, or, all those in favor of signify by saying aye on item number six?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, would you please take us into the first public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. That's quite the read here. Counselor to conduct a public hearing on public nuisance properties. One, south of eleven forty-five South Fourth, or right of eleven forty-five South Fourth or northeast corner of South Fourth at Franklin Street, which is Cartwright, Territor, T R Lot seven through twelve, Block twelve. Number two, south of fifteen sixty, south fifteen seventy-five Calder, Lot three, four, five, Block thirty-six. Number three, forty-two fifteen East Lucas, P T F R H T S sixty-five dash two, sixty-six dash two, P L D D fourteen, T R thirty-eight Williams. Number four, north of Abrahant, thirty-four seventy Malum fenced area, D Brown, C C one north, one sixty-seven Block twenty-seven, one point six acre, Columbus Cartwright, number one. Five, twelve eighty-five north, left of twelve ninety-five north Calder, Lot five, Block forty-four. Six, east of Abrahant, fifty-two sixty through fifty-three sixty Spencer, T R ninety-four, P L D twenty-one, L Pickner, four point five four two acres. And seven, right of and south of twenty-eight twenty-five South Twelfth, right of College Acres, extension Lot one through three, Block thirty-three B. Number eight, thirteen fifty-five cable across from thirteen seventy cable, Chasen, Lot three, Block ten. And number nine, eleven sixty-nine Broadway, eleven hundred block at center, three hundred block, one two hundred and fifteen feet east from southeast corner Calder, Lot six, Block sixteen.
All right, the public hearing is now open, and we have Mr. Kenneth Coleman with the Health Director.
Again, good evening, Mayor and Council. We just have some updates. What we, what we normally do is that when we bring properties before council, we always continue to go out and check to see whether or not they're continuing to work. So with that being said, the first property right of and south of eleven forty-five South Fourth Street, this property, as of today, has been brought into compliance. So there's no need for consideration on this property. As well as the second property, south of fifteen sixty, south fifteen seventy-five, has also been brought into compliance. So there's no consideration for that property. Now, forty-two fifteen Lucas, as you can see, they're in violation of Chapter ten, which is the Health and Sanitation Code, which deals with rodent harborage as well as mosquito breeding, and as well as Chapter twelve, which deal with offenses and nuisance, nuisances. So you can see the litter on that particular property. Next one. North of Abrahant, thirty-four seventy Malum, there's some litter there as well, and so we're continuing to work with the property owners, but as you can see, it was tagged in February the fourteenth of twenty twenty-five, the reinspection was completed on the twentieth, and so the property has not been brought into compliance. Twelve eighty-five North Street, as you can see, it's kind of hard to see, but in the back, there's some, some tents and some camping going on, of course, with a lot of litter as well. So that one has not been brought up into compliance. East of Abrahant, fifty-two sixty to fifty-three sixty Spencer, as you can see on the picture, again, we just continue trying to work with the property owners to bring the property into compliance, but we need you guys to consider this one as well. South of twenty-eight twenty-five South Twelfth, right of, as you can see, there's a lot of litter, there's a lot of trash. And again, we just continue to work with the property owners, but they're still failing to bring the property into compliance. As well as thirteen fifty-five cable, across from thirteen seventy cable, the same issue, a lot of litter, a lot of trash. And this last property here has been brought into compliance, so we don't need no consideration on eleven sixty-nine Broadway. Any questions?
I don't believe so. Does, is anybody here signed up to speak on?
Ms. Addie Allen, ninety-six ninety-five Gross, Beaumont, Texas. She signed up for item number seven and eight. Is she here? Only eight? Okay, then we don't have anyone, Mayor.
Okay. With that, the public hearing is closed, and Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number seven?
Consider in ordinance finding and ratifying the determination of the Public Health Directive that public health nuisances exist on the following nine properties, and order the owners to abate public health nuisances within ten days. If the property owner fails to comply within ten days, staff has requested city council authorization to abate said properties without further notification to the property owner or city council action. Is it still nine? There's six.
Six.
Yeah, I think he wants, it's one, two, and nine that we're, that will adjust for the ordinance.
To be, to be removed.
Yes, sir.
All right, is there a motion for item number seven?
Move to approve with the exception of one, two, and nine.
Second.
There is a motion and a second on item number seven, is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number seven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may you take us into the second public hearing?
Yes. Counselor to conduct a public hearing for counsel to consider an ordinance to declare three twenty-eight through three thirty-eight Bowie and four eighty-six through four ninety-eight Pearl Street, also known as the Gilbert Building, as an imminent danger, and order the owner to raise the Building, as an imminent danger and order the owner to raise the structure within five days. Staff is requesting city council authorization to demolish that structure without further notification to the property owner or city council action.
All right, the public hearing is now open. This is Demi Ingman.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm going to apologize ahead of time. I'm going to try to keep this as concise as possible. On March 31st of 2024, the Gilbert Building was originally red-tagged as imminent danger. On June 6th, 2024, the building caught fire. On June 10th, 2024, the building was tagged again for imminent danger due to the fire damage. The city engaged a structural engineer for a recommendation and the report recommended demolition of the structure. On June 18th, 2024, council considered a raise order but then tabled it with conditions for 60 days to allow the owner to return with a plan of action and enter into a work program. On August 20th, 2024, council allowed the property owner to enter into a 150-day work program with conditions to restore the exterior walls, roof, and elevated floors to their original capacity and that any extension of time shall be reviewed by the council. Staff received an updated project schedule on January 6th, 2025, revealing that the completion date to be extended to April 23rd. On January 7th, 2025, the property owner requested an extension of time from council and staff recommended to grant the extension as the property owner has mobilized his demolition crew and they were working towards interior demolition to remove all loose and hanging debris. This extension came with conditions to restore the exterior walls, roof, and elevated floors to their original capacity no later than April 23rd, and to disclose the intent timeline and plans by March 11th, 2025. On February 14th, staff received an updated project schedule anticipating the completion date to be extended to May 12th, 2025. We also received an email from the property owner on the 14th that the demolition project was complete. On February 21st, the building officials performed a routine inspection to verify it was complete and safe. The interior still had hanging and loose debris. On February 24th, a water line broke near the Gilbert and in result, the building officials requested an engineer's analysis of the foundation. On February 25th, the building officials met the property owner on site and it was noticed at the time that the red tag placard was removed and several, including several other buildings that were originally tagged in the proactive downtown code sweep were also removed. On February 27th, Terry Shipman assessed the foundation and provided a written report stating there was not any evidence that the water line break undermined or otherwise damaged the foundation of the Gilbert Building. February 28th, building officials performed a subsequent inspection with a drone to assess the building's current condition. Immediately, additional placarding was placed on the building, stating the structure was unsafe and its occupancy had been, is prohibited by the building official. Due to the visible current state of the building and the dangerous situation that occurred with loose debris falling onto site workers while demobilizing and removing the scaffolding, we ordered a structural analysis from Mr. Shipman. On March 5th, 2025, Mr. Shipman performed a site assessment of the building. His written report states that this is an imminent danger and should be resolved immediately. On March 13th, 2025, the property owner submitted a letter to staff. However, that letter did not disclose a timeline, which was ordered by the council as a condition of extension to April 23rd. In reality, we're 10 months out now post-fire. No repair work has begun aside from an incomplete interior demolition project. In light of Mr. Shipman's assessment and that immediate action must be taken, the building official is recommending a raise order to demolish the Gilbert Building located at 328 Bowie Street for the preservation of life, property, and safety of the public. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Do we have anyone signed up to speak and?
Yes, sir. Dylan Richardson, 555 Neil Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Ladies and gentlemen, picture a sinking ship, hull breached, crew squabbling over a shattered compass, and a captain, which is the collective seven of you who have spent years running us aground while the budget vanishes into thin air, water is pouring in, passengers are clinging to the rails. And who does the captain blame? Not yourselves, not the storms you ignored nor the neglect you fostered, no. You point a trembling finger at the man who owns the cabins and cry, "It's his fault. If only they were shinier, we'd be fine." That's Beaumont today, a failing city with crumbling streets, a ballooning deficit, and a downtown drowning in crime and despair. Yet here you are, clutching your megaphone, desperate to pin it all on one man, Tom Flanagan. This isn't just unfair, it's a disgrace. For decades, this man has poured his heart, soul, and fortune into saving downtown. 14 historic structures, 12 over a century old, still standing because of him. He revitalized Crockett Street, lifted an entire block, gave this city a pulse when its leaders couldn't even muster a plan. And what your thinks, a toxic government jacking appraisals by 1,000%, a sham committee crushed the second it dared mention crime, and a council looking at you, war two, politicizing every honest word. Crimes rampant, schools are failing, and vandals run wild, yet you pin the damage on him, publicly executing the one who cared while you dais of liars smirk. Even your mayoral candidate and incoming at-large councilman in a hit piece unknowingly stood in front of one of the many successes this property owner holds. And why? To sling mud. No empathy, no accountability, just a city hall to bankrupt in spirit to admit it's the crime which you have let fester that shuttered Crockett Street and not Mr. Flanagan's grit. Beaumont's leaders have no business lecturing anyone when they can't balance their books or sweep their streets. Many people know this city and downtown, for that matter, can be saved. Some would say it must be saved for our future. And while you can scapegoat Mr. Flanagan now, history will hold you seven accountable. The ship is sinking, and I assure you, it's not the cabins, it's the captain. Thank you.
Thank you.
Addie Allen, 9695 Gross, Beaumont, Texas.
Addie Allen, 9695 Gross, Beaumont, Texas, 07, to City Manager, Mayor, Council, and Staff. I stand here because when I read number eight, the word imminent danger just popped out at me being a safety professional in one of my lives. Imminent danger refers to a situation where danger exists that could reasonably be expected to cause death or serious physical harm either immediately or before the danger can be eliminated. Imminent danger, that means that if the responsible party does not take care of the situation, the city of Beaumont taxpayers will. And if there is asbestos like it was in 555 Main, and we have firefighters that are subjected to going in there to do the demolition or whomever, there's a liability. Now, with homeowners, we tear it down and there's cost. But there's a great big cost when you have to do a building, raise it or implore it, whatever the word might be. So I'm asking, do we have a budget to drop that building? Because it's going to cost a lot of money to do so. That's my concern. Is there a budget? We give grace to whomever, but grace comes with a cost. God bless each of you in making this decision, because imminent danger is no joke. I've gone down to Riverwalk, a nice restaurant, you know? So that's going to affect people if there's asbestos flying in the air, even though they may encase it. So I'd like to know, if there's a decision to do it in five days, how much money do you have available to do it? Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
I see the property owner here. Were you wanting to address during this public hearing or bring any of your consultants up as well?
Mr. Mayor and Council and staff, good afternoon and thank you. Lot to say, but I would just kind of want to stick to the issues. But I do feel, in light of recent events, that I'd like to make clear my intentions for this city. I've always been, when I chose to live here, to make a difference, to change the negativity in this city, in this area, that things, good things can't happen here. I have always looked at the city of Beaumont as having wonderful architecture and history, and I fell in love with it, and I wanted to preserve it. I've always been an advocate for saving historical structures. And because I grew up in Port Arthur and saw the downtown die and with it the city, I never wanted that to happen here. That's been my mission. And when I bought the Gilbert Building from the city, it had been neglected. The city never spent a penny on it. When it was burned, it was essentially the same condition. There are comments that the code violations had something to do with it. That was the first smear. The code violations were graffiti, which is rampant through downtown, broken windows where the kids throw rocks through them, which is rampant through downtown, and ants. None of that contributed to the fire. And so there's a lot of people in this room, a lot of them thinking, "He's the responsible party." I think that it will be shown that I'm not the responsible party, but I took responsibility to try to continue in spite of this terrific setback to try to save the building. And so I want to talk about that. So you all know the history of our meetings here, the demolition. On our last walk-through with the city, there are a couple of items, small items, that the city pointed out they would like to be done. One of them is the capstone on the exterior walls that was knocked loose by the water cannons when they were putting the fire out. So we've seen that, we've met with the contractor. It should be finished by the end of this week or early next week. So that part of this will be done. We have done it through environmental monitoring the whole time. The air quality has been pure and clean, no asbestos in the air. We do care about public safety. And so we tried to, we've had no accidents so far, which was another, our primary goal. In our last meeting, we knew that we were, excuse me, close to needing to put together our shoring, our stabilization plan. And I want to talk to you about that. So I have today Rob Fusiliere, Leanne Fusiliere, and Josh Reeves with Alliance Engineers. And we've engaged them through this whole process to help us understand the structural aspects of the building. And they've been a great resource. And they've also brought in additional consultants. So I'm going to bring them up here in a minute. But they're a company that's grown its tremendous success story in southeast Texas, right here in downtown. They've been a huge resource So I think, I hope that's what we're really here for, to talk about the shoring up plan. So, Rob, Josh, would you? I also have Charlie Garringer with the Germer Law Firm here representing us in the back. So, Rob, why don't you take it from there? And Rob, Rob will explain kind of step by step our approach to stabilize the building.
Good afternoon, Council and city officials. First, I want to thank Tom for his interest in persistence in working with us to analyze and potentially save the building. And I would say that from where we are now, after gaining access of the top floor of the building recently and completing our original analysis of the structure, we have determined that the structure is salvageable. More than that, it's salvageable with a fairly straightforward effort. And so thank you, Tom, for the interest in saving a historic building. I know I can speak for the staff at Alliance Engineers. We're all engineers, some of us mechanical, instrument, electrical, structural, and all the rest of it. But we're all of the same mind, wanting to preserve what we have here in Beaumont. And certainly, the Gilbert Building is a significant historical structure that we're very excited about working with Tom to potentially, potentially save. Tom mentioned that I have with me here, Mr. Josh Reeves, he's another professional engineer in the field of civil and structural engineering. And he's led our effort internally to provide the inspections of the internal structural elements of the building and working with some real experts in New York City that are expert on this type of historical building. So a lot of good work's gone into the effort to get us where we are here today. In summary, without getting too technical, we love the technical stuff, and we'll answer any questions you guys have. But in summary, we've established that the interior metal columns are in good shape. There was quite a bit of concern, they're cast iron construction, and there was quite a bit of concern that not so much necessarily the heat of the fire, but the heat with the quenching effect of the firewater could have created a weakening of those, of those columns. And we've done a pretty thorough inspection of all those columns and have not, have not found any, any concern as far as the structural integrity of the columns themselves. We reported, I think, in a previous meeting that there is a lot of structure internal to the building that when you go out and look at it, it looks terrible, but it is adding to the structure of the building. And so a lot of that will be preserved in the plan that we've put forward to Tom. And in summary, what it amounts to is the third floor and the fourth floor and the roof elevations will require some degree of work. The roof requiring a complete rebuild of the original structure of the roof. The main girders are in place and will require some amount, minimal amount of reinforcement, and then we'll put in joists and decking on the roof structure. The fourth floor and the third floor below it will require a circumfrental, if you will, a perimeter, reestablishment of the original floor structure. And again, a lot of that structure is still in place. So we'll plan to remove the, any debris that's in the way, lock down the structure that remains, and then supplement the areas that are, that are missing. So you'll end up being able to walk into the Gilbert Building, look up, there will not be a second floor. It's not necessary from a structural integrity standpoint. Third floor, there'll be a perimeter structure that looks a lot like the old structure with the middle bay being mostly open. Same thing on the fourth floor, middle bay mostly open, and the roof structure will be back essentially in the, in the, in the state that it was in before the fire. So we're very optimistic. We're very certain that the plan that we have been working with Tom on will restore the building structure and the safety of the building. And again, we're excited to continue, hopefully continue with Tom to bring that old building back.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilman Turner?
Mr. Rob, thank you for coming up. Mr. Flanagan, thank you guys for coming up as well. Last time we were here, the question was asked of you, did you see this building as an imminent danger? And you said you needed time to do the reports and the whole nine. So now that we had that time, is your answer still the same or is it yes or no?
Yes, I would say if anything, we've gained more confidence in the, in the structure from the last time I reported to you guys. Again, the interior columns, we were suspect, to say the least, that those cast iron columns were damaged and some of them would need replaced. columns were damaged and some of them would need replacing, and we haven't, through our inspection, have not seen that. And we've since then, since our last, or my last visit with you guys, have been able to gain access to the third, fourth, and, you know, roof area. And it does look better than we expected from a structural integrity standpoint.
Councilman Fellshaw?
Mr. Flanagan, thank you for coming before the council. I know that standing here at the podium and facing the dais and some of the questions could be considered uncomfortable for some people.
It is.
So...
No fun.
I appreciate you coming up here. I do sense that you're trying to find a pathway forward with the city, that you'd like to partner with us and try to resolve this issue and make this project work. Do you feel like your record of follow-through with the city has been adequate with this project and other projects?
Okay.
And please don't go into a long, just give me, give me a, have you, do you feel like you've hit your, you've hit your benchmarks and that you've satisfied the agreement that you've had with the city?
I was thinking, I'm a pretty humble individual even before all this. Nobody could be going through what I've been through and not be humbled by it, but I don't think I'm any big deal. But there's nobody that, I know there's a lot of people that love the city here, so we're not going to fight about that. But I love the city, and I've shown that. And if you look around, Mr. Fellshaw, I mean, you made a, one of your campaign commercials coming out of my building, and you didn't know it was my building. And that kind of hurts. Crockett Street was something I worked on since I was 23 years old, to make that happen.
And I appreciate what you did.
One thing about me is that it might take me decades, but I'm pretty, I'm pretty tenacious. So, on this particular project, this is an enormous project. Councilman Getz even, which I appreciated, recognized that in the last meeting, compared it to the Notre Dame restoration. But a private company, you know, we could have, some people tell me, many people say should have, just said, "City, it's your fault that this happened." But I want you all to know, I don't think the crime downtown, the fire, was our fault. But in a crisis, you can fight, or you, somebody can step and take the heavy load. That's what we did. But I don't want any of you to think for a minute, or anybody in this room to think for a minute, that we're responsible for that fire. Okay? And I know you got me under investigation, that's fine. Okay? But, so, we've been very tenacious about this. We've been blessed to have Alliance step up that are right across the street, they have taken an interest in it. We've all been on a mission. I promised a short answer. I'm sorry. But I will say this, this is kind of overwhelming, you know? It's, it's in the press, in the social media, in the law enforcement and all that. It's forced us to get behind on some of our other projects. We're not a large company, but it's like a hurricane, not just a fire hit the building, but it hit my life. So, I'm proud of what we've done. We've got a lot of catch-up to do on some of the other buildings because of this.
Well, and Mr. Flanagan, you mentioned the restaurant, and I do appreciate what you did with that.
I'm not poking.
No, no, it's fair, it's fair. I appreciate what you've done there, but your success with one building doesn't give you a pass on all the other buildings.
Crockett Street is five buildings.
Okay, well, I'll give you five then.
Five buildings.
But that doesn't give you a pass on the Gilbert Building. The Gilbert Building is a separate project that has to be addressed. Now, you've mentioned the city's done nothing with that. It's my understanding, and I can't stand to be corrected by the staff, that the Gilbert Building was given to the city by the family and then put up for auction to sell. We never intended to develop that building. That was given to the city, and then we put it up to sell. So, just saying we never did anything with it, I'm not sure is a fair statement. But trying to find a pathway forward, I, for the years, I mean, I've talked to you more than once, and you and I for years have tried to find a pathway forward, and I wanted that. I wanted to build a bridge between you and City Hall to Novelle. One of the things you could do for us, and help me, talking within the context of downtown development, downtown buildings, Gilbert Building, you wanted to be a good citizen to work with us. We're a taxing entity. So, help me understand, if you have the capital, the working capital, which I'm assuming you do, or else you wouldn't take on the project, you have the working capital to invest in this building, correct? Not asking for information, details, but I'm assuming you have the ability to invest in this building?
Who do you think's been paying for it so far?
Okay, so, the answer is yes. So, with that said, as a city, an entity, a taxing entity, how do we deal with the back taxes on all the other buildings? I mean, I think there's a report of 11 buildings with over 300,000. A good-faith gesture to the city, within the context of what we're discussing, would be to help us understand moving forward.
All right, Councilman, I think we have to stay restricted to this one building.
And I, I...
I deserve the right to answer that.
And I anticipated that, so I, but I'll leave it on the floor.
I'd like to answer that.
It's your choice to answer or not to answer.
I'd like to answer that. I am one of the larger property taxpayers in this city that's not a refinery or a plant. Okay. Now, in addition to everything we're dealing with, a directionless city, I think, and crime rampant, we had another problem that, over the last several years. And that is that the appraisal district increased assessments. You're aware that they pretty much homes go up 25%, 35% a year? Are all of you aware of that? Did you know, I know you know, because I've told you, I've told the mayor, they increased the assessments 300% to 1,000%. No appraisal, no justification. No public official would help us. We fought that. We fought it hard. It took us two years. If we had not won that, you might as well drop an atomic bomb here. This property would be radioactive. Nobody would buy a building, insure it, and pay hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxes to let it get attacked and broken into and defaced and burned. Who would do that? It's already hard enough. So, the majority of our properties are paid up. There were some of the older ones that were caught up in that dispute that we're paying off. Okay? So, I'm saying that. But there's a lot of people that really enjoy embarrassment. I'm not embarrassed by it. Okay? There's nobody on this diocese that offered any help on that. If we had not won that, your downtown wouldn't be touched for 100 years. Okay? I think we ought to get some credit for standing up to the powers that be. It was a money grab. It was outright money grab for bureaucrats to pass an unvoted tax increase. Do you know what 1,000% means? If you have a building worth 2 million, it's worth, it's assessed at 20 million.
All right, Mr. Flanagan, I'm going to interrupt you, because we can go on about this all day, and I want to say, this is not about you, this is about a building.
No, but I'm talking about...
I understand, but that's...
An issue that was brought up.
I appreciate that, but we're going to get back on task about the decision that's going to be made about this building.
May I? Okay. So, I want to show you something. There's this talk about Mr. Shipman's reports.
Mayor, I'd like to hear from, from our experts. I think, I think we've heard enough, and we know where all this is going, and we need to stay on task with this building. I mean, I want to hear about if there's actually debris falling off of this building right now. That's, that's a safety issue right now. That's, that's what we need to hear, that's what I need to hear to make a decision about this. You know, I want to, I mean, Mr. Flanagan already said, he's, Mr. Flanagan, are you, you're the owner of that building, are you not responsible for the security of that building?
Yes.
All right, there you go.
But is the city also responsible for security downtown?
Yeah, we are, but I tell you what I've always said, we have limited resources with our police department. So, I would rather than be out in neighborhoods watching out for our citizens than guarding empty buildings. That's, that's your responsibility. You're talking about an alarm and lighting and making sure that the building is secure. That's it.
Okay.
I certainly understand where Councilman Durio's coming from. I would like for us to stay on task on this building, and I understand with all council, we're limited, because that is what is posted, is this building that we're dealing with today.
But I think it was time to hear from...
We will, we will.
...Demi or our engineers, it's time for us to hear from them.
We will hear from them.
Can I pass this out?
Sure. Hand it to City Secretary.
So, while, while you're looking at that, while we were working very diligently on this several weeks ago, as some of you may know, there was a huge blowout of a city, main city water line, right in front of our building. It blew a hole eight feet deep. I don't know the exact measurements of it, and it wiped out the street and the sidewalk all the way up to the building. And one day soon after it happened, I was walking by, and by the way, council members, the whole time the demolition project has been going on, the city, there's been good cooperation, I think, and I think they would say they've had access anytime they wanted to the project. There's been nothing hitting. City could come over as often as they want. But on this particular day, I noticed Mr. Shipman, and he was examining the blowout. And so, we talked a little bit about it. I wasn't advised that he was there. I wasn't advised that they were doing a survey. I wasn't advised that there was an engineer hired until a few minutes ago, when Ms. Inghman said there was a report. No one told us about that. So, we, we asked for it verbally, and we're told we have to write a letter. We wrote a letter saying we can't, the city said, "We can't respond to your letter, you have to do a public information request." We did a public information request, asking for any photographs that the city has, any reports that they have, any engineering reports, anything like that. No response. So, we sent another one, no response. Until just now, we didn't know there's a report. We haven't seen it. We asked that the city not cover the hole up until we had a chance to evaluate it. It was covered up like that. But you can see from the pictures, and we have others, that it blew out everything all the way up and under the sidewalk, all the way to the corner of the building. So, I'll let Rob talk about the significance of that, but we do want to have that report, and we deserve to have it. Anything, Josh or Rob?
Yeah, absolutely. Tom asked us when he learned about the blowout to do whatever work we needed to do to determine the potential impact on the, on the integrity of the building and tie it in with the work that we're already doing. And we, we discussed that with Tom. We made a site, a site visit, if you will. We walked around the corner from our office and went and looked at it. There's some significant displacement of the sidewalk right next to the building, you know? And so, as an engineer, we need information, and I know you guys probably hear that a lot, but we were unable to quantitatively, quantitatively respond to Tom's request, "Tell me that my building's okay," or "Tell me what I need to do to tie it into this restoration project to resolve any issue that you guys are aware of with the, with the washout." So, we're unable to do that. You guys have heard me say that before, we need more information. When it comes to the overall building structure, we have that information now, and we're confident, you know, we can, we can speak to it and put our name on it. As far as the situation with the washout, though, we're, we're back where we were several months ago with the overall building structure, we need more information. So, that's what, that's what we relayed to Tom, and that, I think, started the information request that he provided to you guys. So, we don't know right now to what degree, if any, to what degree, if any, that washout has reduced the load-bearing capacity of that foundation. That's kind of a big deal for, for an engineer to know.
Councilman Getz?
Do we have a report? And if so, has it been requested by Mr. Flanagan? And if so, has it not been provided to him for some reason?
We received the, the request this morning, and we responded to it with this report in there. It wasn't included in y'all's packet, because in the report that we received, it says, "From Mr. Shipman," that's who we engaged. "I did not observe any evidence that the water line break undermined or otherwise damaged the foundation of the Gilbert Building. However, I was not able to view the subgrade below the heaved sidewalk. After that section of pavement is removed, then he can make his determination." But I will pass out, it's Exhibit C, so you guys have a copy. But it wasn't included, because the water line shouldn't have affected the existing...
Councilman Getz?
...conditions of the building.
We asked for it three times in writing. We didn't wait till just this morning. Okay. I don't know why it was withheld, and it was brought up today that there's a report, which we've, we've been, we have the right to know. Somebody blows out a crater in front of your house, all the way up to your front door, you have a right to know everything about that.
Well, Mr. Flanagan, certainly, the water blowout was not your fault, not your responsibility, and I am a little distressed to hear that you're saying that you've requested it for three times. Did the request go to the city clerk? Did it go to the Public Works Director?
We wrote to the building department, and then we were told it has to be a, for lack of terminology, open records request or public information. We did that twice.
The request that I got this morning was through our open records program, and we fulfilled that this morning. But as far as like the correspondence or however many times, I'll have to defer to the city clerk's office.
According to staff, they are currently waiting on legal on whether there's something in there that, dealing with some conditions to be released. I think Chase has it, maybe. So, I will check after the meeting.
But this is it?
I don't work on weekends, and I was at a funeral yesterday, so...
Mr. Flanagan, when, when did you make this request?
I can get...
According to staff, one was received on the sixth, but I think that information was provided. I'm finding out now how many requests...
No, no information was provided, but we got one question, what blowout? So...
Was that question to clarify your request?
It, it showed that whatever person read the request wasn't familiar with the incident. So, do you have it now?
The one was sent to Chase today.
Yeah, do you have, do you, do you have the request in writing?
No, but do you have the, you have the packet that we just got?
No, I do not, and it may have arrived the office while I'm coming down here, I don't know.
This is a timeline that I prepared for today through, to ensure that we had our inspection dates done and everything like that. This is, this is a timeline that was produced through my building officials to prepare it for today, and make sure that you guys have all of the information that you need.
Well, but the statement that we requested it today, that's incorrect.
The statement that we received the request today is correct.
We probably sent, we probably sent a follow-up.
So, according to staff, you only sent one in your name that they have? And that's it?
I can provide them.
And I checked, it was forwarded to my office today.
Right. And then they asked to define what blowout meant in, in your words, or what that meant, because they didn't know what blowout meant.
All right, thank you for bringing that up. I would appreciate if Mr. Fitzman, Mr. Shipman could come up and address his March 5th and, if any, others, because I do want to stay on task about the building. And I understand, y'all are saying you're concerned about how that's related to it, and he's, he's done an inspection with regard to the, the water main leak referred to as a blowout. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
First, the water main leak, it was a geyser. I went down there, I believe, the day after, or maybe a couple of days after. And the sidewalk is damaged, has got, got to be replaced. I could not see how far the undermining went. I could not see how far the undermining went when I was down there. It was my understanding when I left that the city is going to have to rebuild the sidewalk. They're going to tear that out. They would call me back. Excuse me. I will take a closer look at what happened and if there's possible foundation damage to the building. When I was there, I looked for evidence of possible damage, but it was a very cursory inspection. I did not see any. As far as my letters since then, there were two items. The scaffolding was being demobilized and it looked like they were going to take the scaffolding out on the second and the third floor. But those floors would collapse if that scaffolding were taken out. So it had to be demoed before the scaffolding could come out. The other item was the capstone is very loose and is in danger of falling. Not all of them, but some of them. And I did call that an imminent danger. And I believe, Mr. Flanagan, I heard on the news last night, that the scaffolding would not come down until the demo occurs on the inside and the capstones would be taken care of. Now, if you have any questions for me, I'm open.
This question may not be for you, but did I hear earlier that the city was called and said that the demolition was finished and that they went out there to do that inspection at that point?
Yeah, we received an email on the 14th that the demo was complete. Our building official responded on the 18th, it was over the weekend, responded on the 18th that they needed to do. Yes, sir. That they needed to do a inspection to ensure that it was done correctly before demobilizing.
So at that point, just to understand, they were saying it was, the demolition was complete and our, our city inspectors found that that was not the case. And that's what we're talking about as well today. Is that correct?
Correct. I'll invite our building official Boyd Meyer to come up, but that's, that's correct.
While he's coming up, do you have a copy of that last schedule we had on this project?
Yeah. The one, not today, or yes, the one with the April 23rd deadline.
Say that again.
Can I comment on your last question?
Well, I mean, only, I, I just wanted to know the answers to that question. I got the answer, is that correct?
And I mentioned that we had met. Boyd pointed out what he wanted done. The contractor was out of town, out of state. We met with the contractor, he's going to finish those items. They're relatively minor. But let me explain, the entire project was shored up with scaffolding, pressing against surfaces during the whole process. So when that scaffold is taken down and loosed, some small portions will fall. That was noticed as, as we're demobilizing the scaffold. But that's always the intention to take care of those items.
Okay.
Mayor and council, this for the record is Boyd Meyer, I'm the building official for the city of Beaumont. Those areas that we're talking about that we went out to inspect to make a determination whether there was a complete demolition on the Gilbert Building. Those areas, as the scaffolding crew was demobilizing, there was debris coming down. And we went in there and looked at it and we also took a drone in there to get some pictures and some closer footage, you know, where we couldn't get to. And made a determination that it was unsafe. And so we placarded the building that it was unsafe to enter. After that, we called for a meeting and Mr. Flanagan and his engineers and Terry Shipman, our engineer, we all met out there and we looked at it. And at this time, there was no, no other work going on, no scaffolding crew, no demo crew. There was nobody working. And we all agreed and made a determination that further work needed to be done in order to get the rest of the fire damaged material demolished and to deem the place safe again before any more scaffolding could be removed.
Boyd, could you clarify, was that safe for the workers to continue their demolition or safe in, to the public?
No, it was on the interior of the building was the fire damage that was, that was unsafe. The coping actually up on top of the wall was actually, could be unsafe for the public. Even though there's barricading outside and the fencing is high up on top, which you can see how high that is, that, that it could be a hazard more to, also to the public. But most of the, the concerns we had at that time was on the interior for the construction workers to continue to, to demobilize the scaffolding inside the building.
And the sidewalk's been barricaded for well before the March of last year, the 24th, whenever the building was tagged, is that correct?
Correct.
Because of the coping falling off or the threat of that or glass falling out?
Yeah, all of the above, anything on the building period, glass, pieces of fire damage, trim on the window frames, the coping, numerous things around the perimeter of the building.
Okay. Councilman Getz?
Boyd, what I'm gathering is you're telling us that we need to have additional demolition done before the scaffolding is removed so that the removal of the scaffolding won't allow that just to collapse down. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Is there anything that can be done to further secure public safety with regard to coping or items falling off of the building that is not being done?
First and foremost, the coping needs to be removed. That is loose. That's number one, which is up on top of the wall. Secondly, from the beginning of the project, our boarding and securing that we were requiring has not been completed on the perimeter of the building, which is the window openings and then also on the bottom floor, the entry areas. So that there, in addition to the removal of all the loose materials on the perimeter of the building would deem it safer than it is now.
Is the building itself structurally sound enough to believe that it is not in imminent danger of collapse from wind or any other condition?
That report we're waiting on from the, from the owner's engineer. We were hoping to get it today, but that's, that's, it should be included in our report moving forward.
Is there, is there a report that is coming that would talk about the structural integrity of the building?
Yes, that, that's correct. That'll be part of the package once we finish the reviews with Mr. Flanagan. Include background on how we did the analysis and current state of the building and the requirements for reinforcing to get it back to.
When can we anticipate receipt of that?
Days. There are a few items that were helping.
There, there's still a few items that we're helping Mr. Flanagan work out as far as the method for, the practical method for, for performing the reinforcements that we've put on paper. We've, he's coordinated a meeting with us and one of his, one of his construction, potential construction contractors. So we're putting together a bill of mater, bill of material for him and helping him with some pricing and that kind of thing. So when all that's done and, and Mr. Flanagan's satisfied, we'll present to him a package that includes, again, the background, the methods that we use to do the analysis and the resulting designs to bring it back to compliance.
This was supposed to be kind of a status report today. So I was a little surprised to see that we also was, were provided with an agenda item that asks us to consider going forward now instead of after April 23rd with ordering demolition of the building within five days. Is there some reason why the timetable was advanced to today instead of waiting until after April 23rd, which was the deadline that we originally provided to Mr. Flanagan?
Yes, sir. In your original ordinance, y'all put in a condition for that extension to April 23rd that he needed to disclose intent, timeline and a, and plans to the city or disclose it to y'all on March 11th. We hadn't received anything. The only thing that I received was via vacant building registry was this letter of intent from Mr. Flanagan. That was submitted to me on March 13th and I submitted this agenda item on the 12th to meet internal deadlines.
So mayor, just to clarify, Councilman Getz's question, the reason it came back because council asked it to come back on March 11th. Of course, we didn't meet on March 11th. The good thing is that March 12th, the package that was just referenced to was supposed to be submitted by that date. But we, as Ms. Inghman pointed out, we didn't receive that. In fact, going back to the seven, summer hearing that we had on this, that package was supposed to be delivered in November of 2024.
Yes, please.
If you guys are referring to, you know, again, we're, we're the structural engineers. So we're not doing the overall project management and we're not doing the overall project management, which would include the overall timeline. But Tom, or Mr. Flanagan has asked us to help him put together the logic of the, of the whole project. And so we produced now several revisions of the overall project timeline. I'm assuming that Mr. Flanagan shared that with you guys. The revision E of, of the overall project timeline puts us dead on schedule. If, if that's, if that's what you guys have.
You have D.
You have D?
So D was not included in the original packet. That's the one that you saw on January 7th in your y'all's packet, which is Exhibit G. That is the one that was recently submitted. So I wanted to make sure that you guys had all of the schedules provided to you.
G is in this packet?
G is in the council packet.
Okay.
I'm referring to revision E from 14 February 2025. And in that, in that revision, we, as an alliance engineer, performed a structural analysis and developing reinforcement plans. That concluded on March the 12th. And the same day we met with Mr. Flanagan to start his one week period to decide or to work with us to optimize and his construction contractor to work with us, again, on the practical methods of moving forward and the costs and the rest of it. Just, again, we're not the project managers, but the latest revision that's now over a month old says that we're, we're dead on schedule.
But it's easy to have a schedule that shows you're on track when you update the schedule.
Yeah, no plan survives contact with the enemy. That's the first rule in project management and in, in the real world, in reality. So yeah, absolutely. And, and again, we're not the project managers, but there, there's a schedule out there that's over a month old that says we're doing what we said we would do, certainly from an engineering standpoint.
Councilman Getz?
So part of the schedule, as I understood it, was to restore the walls to structural integrity and put a new roof on. That's not going to happen by April 23rd under any stretch of the imagination, is it? Could that even possibly be done?
No, but that's not what the schedule calls for. We, we want to get to this point, present the plan to you and, and get your approval on it. That's.
I'd like to clear some things up. So the ordinance that was passed by council, the first condition was the exterior walls, roof and elevated floors shall be restored to their original structural capacity as identified by a structural engineer registered in the state of Texas and completed no later than April 23rd, 2025. The property owner shall obtain all applicable permits. Second condition to that, property owner shall appear before city council at, at the March 11th meeting to report on the progress of, of the project, disclose intent, plans and timeline to make necessary repairs to bring the building into full compliance with the 2021, 2021 International Property Maintenance Code. So they have submitted a project schedule, but y'all have conditioned that it needs to be done by April 23rd, 2025. So they, they keep sending revisions and that's great that we're getting updates, but that's not, that is not aligning with y'all's ordinances and conditions that have been passed.
And that was my concern because realistically, we know that there's no way you're going to get a roof on at that, you know, you're in a month. That's just not going to happen. You know, and optimism is good, but realism is better. And, you know, Mr. Flanagan, you and I go back a long way. I, I do respect the work that you've done downtown and that you have done in the past. But we need to know, is this building, let's just suppose that you finished the demolition safely and it's all cleaned out. You know, it's, it's, it's going to sit there until reconstruction of the building starts. When would that take place? And I guess more importantly, do you condition the reconstruction of this building on any other external circumstance like construction of a Riverwalk? Or, because I've heard that. I've, and I'm, I'm going to put you on the spot and ask you right now, do you condition the, your desire to reconstruct that building on the passage of a Riverwalk?
Mike, it's a good question. It's easy to get off on the weeds in my answer. Okay. Forty some odd vacant buildings downtown.
We are talking about this building, so let's stay on that task. I, I understand your concern.
You cut me off a lot. And may I?
Well.
May I please?
We're going to, we're going to stay on this building. So we're not going to talk about 39 other buildings.
On what conditions will we reconstruct the building?
Mr. Flanagan. That is a question about that building. We're not talking about the other buildings. Okay? So please limit your answers to this building. I understand that you're frustrated. I'm not trying to be difficult. The only agenda item we have is this building. So that is what we're going to discuss.
Okay.
Okay?
The vacancies downtown are caused by a directionless city. When the city gets direction and puts, it puts the environment together.
I'm going to ask that you sit down.
The buildings will be developed. Not just that one, but many of them.
Mr. Flanagan? If you want to continue to talk about this building, but if you're going to talk about anything else, I'm going to ask that you sit down.
Mr. Flanagan, my, my question was really limited onto this building. Did you condition your desire and willingness to redevelop this building on the construction of a Riverwalk? And the reason?
No, no, but I do hope someday the city will realize the opportunity that we have and not blow it.
Because I, I understand what you're, what you're asking. But here's what my concern is. I don't want to spend the next two, three, four, five, 10 years looking at this hulk of a burnt out building when we're trying to do other things downtown. Because I know you will agree that that's certainly not productive for any kind of downtown development, just to have this building sitting there, empty, burned out, charred building.
I didn't burn it and I didn't char it. I'm trying to save it.
I understand that, but I don't want it to just be sitting there.
And it's right across the street from Crockett Street. It's very important to us.
I, I agree with you. I do agree with that. And that's why I'm asking what your plans are.
I gave you a clear answer. You asked if it's contingent upon the Riverwalk. It's not.
You said no.
When I bought it, there was no talk of the Riverwalk.
Do you have any kind of timetable in mind, a realistic one?
I've done more development downtown.
You have a timetable for this building?
Anybody. I wish I could say the last 20 years have been more productive for downtown Beaumont, but I can't say that and neither can you, any of you. Honestly, it's been back, backward sliding rather than progress, but it's within our grasp, our grasp if we all work together. I would hope in the next three to five years that we could turn it into a beautiful apartment building. I've shown you renderings of what we hope to make it look like in previous meetings. I've shown you the vision for the three buildings on Bowie Street. It's not just the Gilbert Building, it's the McFadden and the old First National Bank. We want to.
Mr. Flan, look, renderings are beautiful, but you know, you can paint a picture, but actually getting in there, doing the construction and making it happen is a whole other thing. It costs an awful lot of money to, I, I'm, I'm telling you. I mean, it's not something.
You really think I don't know that?
No, I know. I know you know that.
So I've done, I've done 14 buildings downtown, 14. Is there anybody that's done that? So it's a good question, okay? I think if we all work together, things will move a lot at a better pace and we can maybe make an impact with our lives.
Okay, Mr. Flanagan, I'd like to hear from Mr. Meyer. Okay, Mr. Flanagan, I'd like to hear from Mr. Meyer and if you had any more to say.
I, I have one more thing. I agree with what Boyd said, but as I said earlier, Boyd and his, his coworkers have been coming throughout the project. This is not the first thing that they've noticed. He's made, his staff has made a number of suggestions as we go. And everything he's, he said that he brought up, he did bring up and we agreed to take care of it. I think he would agree with that.
I'd like to ask one more question. What immediate actions have you taken post-March 5th with that site assessment? There's, he mentioned that immediate action needs to be taken. So looks like we went out on 21st to, to look at the demolition. And at that time, I believe everyone was on site. Boyd, correct me if I'm wrong on that. I believe everyone was on site. Y'all looked at it, decided, came to an agreement on what needed to be rectified to make sure that it was safe again. What immediate actions since February 21st have you taken to rectify those issues?
The contractor has been out of country, as I said. The contractor came to my office two days ago. We walked the property. He agreed to fix it. It should take no more than a week. These are not major issues that remain. But going back to the blowout, we submitted open records requests from the city on March 6th, March 11th and March 17th.
Okay, thank you.
The submission for the open records request was done on the 6th. They asked for clarification. They received clarification back from you because you used the word blowout and no, no one knew what that was. So the information has been reviewed and it is ready for release at this point.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Meyer?
I think by now all of us realize that, especially some of us with a lot of construction experience over the years, that if a decision is made to move forward with the project, that in order to restore the building with a roof on it and to the windows, whether it be putting new windows in it or boarding it up and get our boarding and securing done for the way that some of the other buildings are being done correctly, until something else is done with a moving forward, a plan is submitted or permits are pulled and they start working on it. Realistically, we know that it's not going to be done where the deadline is in the ordinance. Impossible. It's not going to happen. I mean, that's, that's just bottom line, no matter what anybody says, that roof and to get everything done, it's not going to happen. So just moving forward realistically, without architects and, and engineering and everything and a plan moving forward, an actual plan. And we have been asking for a plan. What, what, all of us have been, what are we doing moving forward? So we need that to make a determination to put a date on it. Otherwise, we're just grabbing a date out of the sky because a lot, a lot of design has to take place and that's, that's being done. And that they, they've been moving forward on it and working on it as far as, as debris has moved out, the outside walls, the laser analysis, everything that they do, some of the stuff is even over my head. So just want everybody to understand, if moving forward, this project continues, we need to understand that those dates are, to get a roof and to dry that structure in. And, and the showing is, is going to take more time than, than what the date is. And that's, that's just common construction knowledge moving forward on a project of this magnitude. I just wanted to, to mention that.
Councilman Nield, then Councilman Getz?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Myers, you know, my big holdup last time was I always said he wasn't going to hit this April 23rd date, even back in January, whenever that last meeting was. All right. So let's say he makes April 23rd. Let's say he has a roof on there, windows on there, doors dried in. He's still going to have power on the building, still won't have lights on the building, still won't have fire alarm, still won't have sprinkler. So now you have, you, you've created a system where we have the same setup for, for 2.0. You're going to have a, you're going to have a building down there with none of the essentials that you need, but brand new wood in it. So what do we gain?
Well, what I'm asking for is a complete plan, not just the roof. I'm just, I wanted to talk about the roof because that actually dries, dries the building in to protect it and the windows and everything from the elements moving forward. But as far as the, the entire plan as to what's happening to this building, that needs to be submitted too. I mean, it's not going to be long. It's going to be a year. As far as a design professional to come up with a plan on it, I mean, it's, it's, there should be something. And, and we, we don't have it at this time, but I just wanted to, to bring it up that moving forward, we're, we've stuck to that date so far up to this point and that's, that's, that's not a realistic date at this time where we're standing right now.
Yes, sir. Councilman Getz and Councilman Turner.
May I comment?
Well, let me ask this question to Boyd first. So what is a realistic timetable that a person could expect to be able to give you the information that you are requesting, Mr. Meyer?
Just the design?
Just the design, because that's what you just said you were asking for. And then let me take that a step further. Once you have the design, then you can start construction. How long would it take realistically, once you have the design, to get that building dried in to the point you just described?
Well, we were hoping to have, based on their schedule, that a analysis was submitted and a proposal with a design or in a decision, decision to proceed with the project to where, I mean, from the engineer that, that's working on it up to this point. But to come up with that realistic, I can't, I can't give a realistic time, a number at this time.
Why?
I think that question would be fair to ask of his engineer as he is the design professional on the project.
Okay, I'll direct it to you then.
Yeah, we put together an early schedule. Of course, now we're on rev whatever, you know. And we put that schedule and the most recent schedule together based on an unknown reinforcement plan. So now we, we have details. So again, Mr. Flanagan brought, organized a meeting with us and, and a constructor and that, that work started, geez, what was that last Wednesday, I believe. So now what you see on the construction phase schedules was, was without any good solid detail on what the actual scope of that, that construction work is. Now we know, within a, within a couple of weeks, we can put together a detailed schedule that lays out how that work is going to actually be executed. Except right now.
Right. I get it's possible for you to get the demolition finished, coping secured, and have a design by April 23rd. That's possible. I get that. Suppose you finish and hit all those benchmarks. After that, what is a realistic timetable for you to look at getting that building dried in? How many months is that going to take past April 23rd?
We, we actually have the information we need right now to put that timeline together. The execution plan.
We offered to meet with Boyd yesterday, but we're just so busy. We've had a good relationship, believe it or not, with Boyd and his.
So if you have it available, what are we talking about?
So to, just to be really, really clear here, our scope is the structural restoration of the building, not lighting currently. We're not working on lighting and, and some of the other, other scope items. Structural restoration of the building. We have what we need now and, and, and Tom has initiated the beginning of the process to determine how does that timeline, what are those details to actually implement that structural restoration? So we're, under, under Tom's direction, we're working on that right now. Right now, we don't have a, a timeline, but within a couple of weeks, we, we will have a timeline under, under Tom's direction.
What we wanted to do was to meet with the staff and go.
Move to the microphone, please.
What, what we wanted to do, Tom didn't allow everybody's schedule. We wanted to meet with the staff to show them the complete engineering package. So we didn't have to go to the nitty gritty with you, but we have a lot of the details.
Again, Tom, I, I agree, you can probably get all of that done by April 23rd, but for the fourth time, my question is, once you hit April 23rd with your complete engineering package and you presented it out there, this is our plan to go forward, how many months is it going to take to execute that plan?
Say four to five months.
Four to five months?
I'm gonna say so.
And it could be dried in?
Yes. It, and when, when, perhaps when the building department sees our material list, we have everything itemized and quantified, pretty much our standard building materials.
And my question, Demi, is now if we were to pull the trigger and say, nope, you're going to demolish it and we're going to disregard all the work you've already done between the fire and now, how much would it cost our taxpayers if the city were to be the one that demolishes it?
If the city were to demolish it, we got a loose bid for about $400,000. It's unfortunate that it's even being considered on the taxpayers' backs. However, if, if we were to do it, it's going to follow the same exact procedure that we normally do, just like a litter cleanup. We're going to perform the work. Once it's done, we get everything to Central Collections. They invoice the property owner. If he does not pay the invoice or pay the city back, then a lien is placed on his property. This is just like normal, especially because it's a commercial property.
Thank you.
Councilman Turner, did you have a question?
Yeah, my, my question is, it, it's simple. We get back to, I know when you guys came back this, that I was expecting to see the update. If you guys felt like it was deemed them safe and a public nuisance and we have a conflicting opinion with our staff and our engineers. So that's what I'm trying to get clarity on because I know today you guys were going to come back and give us your opinion on if, if, if it was deemed unsafe. And last time, we didn't have our engineer who did the report present, but we have him here today. That's the clarity I want to know, you know, from both sides. I know we kind of talked around it in a nutshell, but I'm just kind of looking for a yes or a no.
What I heard Mr. Shipman say, and I was there when he had one of his inspections, is the imminent danger items were the copings that were knocked off by the, the water cannons, I don't know if that's the right term, from the fire engines, and some limited amount of debris that's falling with, from within. And we've already addressed that in this meeting. We addressed it before the meeting. And he also said he doesn't know how deep the foundation is. He didn't see, he, he, he didn't do digging or excavation to see if there had been a structural weakening of the soils around the foundation. He can speak for himself, but.
Yeah.
What was your question?
Ms. Demi, what, what did we deem it again?
Imminent danger.
Imminent danger and?
That's by our, that's by our codes. This building is imminent danger.
Okay. And that's what, that's what I'm asking. Real, I don't want the long, yes or no, it's an imminent danger. I see y'all have a difference of opinion. I just kind of want to, you know, we, we pay, we, I'm pretty sure we pay the staff to make a recommendation and go out and get someone and to get the professional opinion. I just want yes or no.
Well, that would be yes, but if you remove the loose coping, that becomes a no and you cannot remove the scaffolding without finishing the demolition of the wood on the inside. If you did that, it would go back to yes.
Well, we, we have, does anybody else have any more questions? Are there anybody else signed up to speak? Because if not, I'm going to have everybody sit down.
I don't have anyone else.
Yes, sir.
And, and just, just one maybe insignificant comment that we don't have a different of a difference of opinion with Mr. Shipman. We respect he and his team and have worked together to some degree. We would welcome bringing all the teams together. That's always the best way to get there. So just to be super clear, the engineers are all in the same court in this, in this, in this issue.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Getz?
Mr. Flanagan, I think somebody, maybe it was you, said that the coping could be removed within a week or so. And, and so that danger would be eliminated. And then the only thing left for you to do, according to what I just heard, is finish the interior demolition before you take any scaffolding down. And you're willing to do that, I'm sure.
Yes, yes. It's already in the works.
Councilman Duria.
Did I understand correctly when they said the building is still not secured as far as the doors and windows are concerned? And I mean, that's seems like, I think even you said that's something pretty simple, but it's been 10 months and it hadn't been done yet. Is it a reason why, why they haven't?
While we're doing the demolition, we're, we're leaving access so we can take materials out safely, so we don't bang into something structural. But I met with Boyd and I presented verbally a plan to either board them up with plywood or to use the wire mesh that's used on the Hotel Beaumont. We talked about that and we're willing to do that.
How, how long ago was that, that y'all talked about it?
Last couple of weeks, but I didn't get an answer of, a definitive answer. It's not that we don't talk and we work together every day on various things.
So were you, you were, boy, can you come up? Were you asking him, would that be okay?
We talked about it. He'll remember the, the conversation. It wasn't a formal meeting. It was while we were walking the property together.
When we placarded the building and deemed it unsafe because of the debris on the inside, we walked the outside as well. And that's when we discussed the boarding and securing of the building all the way up and from the bottom floor and also all the way up on the windows. And so that was discussed and we mentioned about the, one of the other buildings or a couple of the other buildings that were boarded and secured downtown that were done correctly, according to our boarding and securing requirements. That's in the code and in our ordinances. And they walked around there and took a look at it and that they were going to proceed in matching what was done and what we said was acceptable at that time. And that was probably a week before last, I believe, when we walked it.
So you still haven't decided if, if we're going to do it or not? It, it, and one other question, is that something that we require?
There was also in your very first ordinance, you required a fence to be installed to properly barricade the area and restrict public access. And it's clear that that hasn't been effective because there's graffiti on, I think, the second floor or up top. So whether that's, and I believe that that is to be to the damaged side of the fence or the fence is not properly cutting off access. So that, that's been insufficient.
So.
If you look at the fence today, it's locked, it's secured.
Okay. So if, if someone gets in there and, and gets hurt, who's liable for that?
I mean.
Whoever can answer it.
I guess it would be the property owner.
If it's the property owner, it's not city owned property, it's not a city project.
Well, one of the main things we have in this meeting about, in my opinion, for me, is the safety of the citizens in and around that building, even the workers. And, and you, you are, you, you seem to, you, you said it to me earlier, you basically blame the city for the security of your building and that's just not true. That's your responsibility. And if it's, if it's still not secure and we, somebody go in there and get hurt, even though it might be your fault, you may be liable, it's still, it's not a good thing for one of our citizens to get hurt because of your building not being secured. And if y'all talked about it two weeks, I'm, I mean, I, I just don't, can't wrap it around my head why it's not done already since.
Since, I, I met with Boyd and I, I said, Boyd, we want to do this to the city's requirement. Would you like plywood or would wire mesh be effective? That way it allows some breeze to go through it. But, you know, I never felt like I got a definitive answer. I was kind of wait, we want to do it the way the city would like to see it done. And I'm sure Boyd would tell you that was the conversation, but we just never came to a conclusion on it.
Well, I think the city has been way more patient, very patient with you on this whole issue. I mean, we have other red tag buildings, you know, that, they don't give them this much time. Well, some of them do. We give them chances, you know, but you seem to be setting your own timeline and not informing the city as to what it is. You know, I don't think you go by this right here, according to this, ever since January, you haven't completed anything. It's a percent complete. It's all zeros. And that's since January the 20th. And this is March.
I don't know what you're looking at. I don't know if it's addition E or not.
I want to look at Exhibit G for the very latest project schedule that has been submitted. That one that's blown up, that was the fourth one. That was, I believe it was the fourth one. That was submitted. one, that was submitted to the city, and that's the one that you reviewed on January 7th. The one that is the most current, that was provided to us by, by Mr. Fusili, Rob, is completing the project on May 12th. It's also slated on here on line 28, that the owner review and decision to proceed were in the current period. So I don't know if Mr. Flanagan can speak to whether he wants to proceed or not, or has decided if he's going to proceed. Looks like he set the deadline for himself on March 19th.
Is that a question? First of all, that's not the last schedule we submitted.
Revision E?
Revision E.
Is not the last schedule?
Revision E is.
Okay, that's the one I'm looking at.
Okay, sorry. As Rob said, we're right up against that time, and we have a lot of engineering. And as soon as we can evaluate the foundation, we're prepared to make a decision.
A decision as to what?
Go forward or not.
By this schedule?
No, I mean, we know the construction can't be done by then. You said that yourself, Councilman.
Several times.
But in the area of public safety, we've done the project safely. And again, I'm being treated like a responsible party for something bad that happened to me? Even in California, there's some empathy for all the people that lost their homes. You know, you don't see that in Beaumont in this case. Everybody wants to jump on the bandwagon as if I...
Well, we have, we have a responsibility to the citizens for their safety. And, and you know, you spoke earlier about us having to work together, but you the one that keep blaming us for this.
I'm not, I'm not blaming.
It's kind of hard to work together if you're hurling accusations at the city.
I shouldn't be blaming me.
Nobody's blaming you. Only thing I said was you were responsible for the security of your building. Is that not true?
Councilman Duryo.
Is that not true?
Yes. Councilman Duryo, this weekend, Redemption Church was broken into twice. The Mildred Building was broken into twice, indecent acts were performed, and the old workforce building, though boarded up, was broken into again. Five break-ins that I know about, okay? Just consider that.
Did they have security, cameras, lights?
I don't, I don't know about Redemption, but they're building a three and a half million dollar church, and it's been vandalized. We got to work together.
I agree, and I don't think a good way to work together is just to hurl accusations and blame responsibility on somebody who's not responsible.
You have to understand how I feel about the accusations coming.
I feel the same way about the ones you hurling this way.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. And is there anybody else signed up to speak in the public hearing? We're going to recess for 10 minutes, so at 4:33...
Close the public hearing.
Huh? Yeah, I'm going to close the public hearing. And then we're going to take a 10-minute recess.
Back there, just to speak to those break-ins and see if they actually happened, if we can kind of get there when we get back.
It's not posted.
It's not posted?
Yeah.
I mean, we talking about everything, so.
We're going to try to, we're going to try to stay on subject. So we're recessed 10 minutes, try to be back down here, everybody, by 4:34, and then we will meet and we will address item number eight. I am going to give Councilman Getz and Councilman Turner a chance to get here, because we're going to be reading item number eight here next.
Mayor Protim Neil, and Councilmember Duryo, Councilmember Getz, Councilmember Turner, Councilmember Phil Shaw, and Councilmember Samuel.
All right, Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number eight, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Council considered an ordinance to declare 328 through 338 Bowie and 486 through 498 Pearl Street, also known as the Gilbert Building, as an imminent danger, and ordered the owner to raise the structure within five days. Staff is requesting city council authorization to demolish said structure without further notification to the property owner or city council action.
Is there a motion on item number eight?
Move to approve the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there is a motion in second for approval of item number eight. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving item number eight, which would be the demolition of the building, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
For the record, I voted yes as well, so we're on the demolition. All right, the motion carries. Mr. City Manager, would you please take us into the work session?
I've got it right here, Mayor. Council to review and discuss a proposed food truck park. We have Mr. Kenny Smith, Facility Maintenance Director, to discuss the food truck park. We have Mr. Kenny Smith, Facility Maintenance Director, to discuss the food truck park.
Good afternoon. My name is Kenny Smith, and I'm the Director of Facility Maintenance here at the City of Beaumont. And it's with my pleasure to speak with you all today about something extremely exciting that could be happening in the City of Beaumont, and that's the establishment of a potential food truck park here. What is a food truck park? A food truck park is defined as a underutilized piece of land that could be designated for food trucks to park on and serve their constituents. But exactly what are the benefits of a food truck park? And more specifically, how does a food truck park benefit the City of Beaumont? It shows that we support small businesses. It provides a platform for entrepreneurs to enter the food industry with low cost. It promotes tourism, also community engagement, creates opportunity for, that attracts residents and tourists to come and visit. Flexibility, seasonal events or pop-ups, and then it also offers a long-term commitment for individuals looking to rent at the food truck park. And then culinary innovation. It offers a wide, a wide variety of cuisines and food options that aren't typically available in Southeast Texas. And what are the benefits of establishing a food truck for actual food truck vendors? Some of the benefits to food truck vendors are increased visibility, which offers the opportunity to attract customers with a centralized location for people to visit them. It's a dedicated area for food trucks to be located, so individuals don't have to Google search or YouTube to find exactly where they are. And then there's also room for networking and community engagement. It's a centralized area where individuals can come out and socialize while enjoying food of different vendors. On this slide, it's the purpose of today's work session, and that's that myself and my staff, we need guidance on the location of where a council would like the food truck park if you want to continue with this project. And the reason that I speak to you all today is because design has been budgeted for this fiscal year, and in order for us to begin this project, we need guidance on where you all would want the food truck park. And in order to get realistic cost estimates, we're going to need that location, because that location is going to help us engage with a design firm so we can get that cost and information. In today's session, I'm going to propose two locations for your review, for potential food truck park locations. There was an alternate location adjacent to Civic Center that we were interested in researching, but we won't be discussing that today because of the ongoing feasibility study on the hotel. And then after I go through the different proposals for the food truck locations, we're going to talk about cost estimates and then also discuss the funding options, the funding scenarios for funding a project like this. The proposed food truck locations. The location on the left, the left, my left, is considered Location A, the Nature's River City Hall location. The address would be eight oh one Main Street, Beaumont, Texas. It's an attractive view of Nature's River, located in central downtown setting, right outside this building, down in what I call like the overflow parking lot. And then the image on the right would be Location B, which I consider the Rotary Centennial Park Event Center location. And the address of that would be six hundred Crockett Street, Beaumont, Texas. It's located next to the Rotary Park, as well over by the Event Center and Lakeside Center. It's a prime location where families spend a lot of their time out there enjoying the amenities of the different facilities there. On this slide, I discussed the Nature's River City Hall location. The conceptual drawing or the rendering on the left is a rendering that's been shared by the Chambers President over the last few years with, with council. It's a very lush concept. It has very nice landscaping, turf, wind sails, and I think even on one of the renders that I seen it actually had a boat dock. But what I can say about this rendering is just a rendering. It doesn't have any cost estimates, or it wasn't done to scale. But it's, it's, like I said, it's a very visually appealing. And as, as heard before, typically when people do vendor, or renderings, it's kind of just to give you an image or help you imagine on what a, what a, what a park could be. And then the image on the right is a rendering that was done by our Facility Maintenance Auto Care Drifter. We actually went out to the, to the site outside, and we did some scaling. And then we actually tried to do a rendering that was similar to the one on the left, but actually incorporated some of the scaling and some of the engineering calculations we're making this. But once again, both of these are just renderings. Until we actually decide on a location and engage with a design firm or architect, none of these renderings are what the park could be like, you know, it could be different or have different artifacts and things of that sort. So this is just a rendering as of right now. On this slide, this is the Rotary Park Event Center rendering. This is also done by Auto Care Drifter in the Facility Maintenance Department. On the left, my left, is the Crockett Street concept. This is the conceptual design of the food truck park on the corner of Crockett and Nature's. It's located in front of the Rotary Park area. As you can see on there, we have the commissary there. We got some wind sails, also areas for the food trucks, the park and, and seating area. So this is one of the concepts we did. And then on the right, my right, is the Nature's concept, which is also over in the Rotary Park area, but it's on the Na- Nature Street, and it's what I would consider behind on the Rotary Park. We have the commissary also noted on this drawing. You can see some of the setups where it could possibly be food trucks. There's wind sails and seating. And then we also have the, the Lake District restroom up towards the top, noted next to the lake. And then again, these are just conceptual renderings. They're not final. And until we have, like I said, a destination that's been selected, and we actually sit down and work with a design firm, these are just conceptual drawings, just to give you an idea of what a potential food truck may look like. On this slide, we discussed the estimated cost breakdown of the Nature's River City Hall location, beginning with the cost of water utilities being at an estimated cost of a hundred eighty thousand dollars. And this cost includes a lift station, which is listed as an estimated sixty thousand dollars. A lift station would be needed at the Nature's River City Hall location due to the fact that it's at a lower elevation and gravity isn't available there. So we would need a pump station to push wastewater upstream to the main sewer line. The next cost is the forced main, which also needs to carry that wastewater from the pump station uphill due to the Nature's River location being down at a lower elevation. Our next cost would be the railroad crossing, which is the estimated cost of sixty thousand dollars. This cost would encompass the railway encroachments or permits, because in order to construct water utilities, we would have to engage with the railroad company and get permitting to be able to pass utilities under the railway, because it's an active railway. And also, not only is this a, a cost, but it also, it's a long lead item, because for typically permitting or encroachments, it usually takes around six months to a year before we can get approval to do construction on a project like this. And then one of our last costs that sticks out is the grease trap, and that's the estimated cost of thirty thousand dollars. And our next cost is a commissary, which is the estimated cost of two hundred forty thousand dollars. And this is, would be a construction of a seven hundred square feet facility. And then our next cost would be a restroom facility, single-use restroom, and that's at an estimated cost of four hundred thousand dollars. And then our next cost would be the amenities for this food truck park, which I have at an estimated cost of four hundred thousand dollars. And this includes some of the things that were listed in the, in the renderings, which is turf or wind sails. Individuals want to use a pavilion, tables, concrete padding, slabs, electrical lighting, security fencing. Bandstand is something that I seen. So these are all of the amenities that would be needed to make this one of those premier location or premier food trucks that you may have visited in other cities. And the total estimated cost for the construction of the Nature's River food truck location would be one million two hundred twenty thousand dollars. Next on this slide, we have the estimated cost breakdown of the Rotary Park Event Center location. My first cost would be the water utilities, which I have down as being sixty one thousand dollars. The reason that this location is cheaper is by being on a area that has regular elevation. You wouldn't need a lift station. You wouldn't need a forced main pipe, nor would you need the railroad crossing, because it's not a railroad crossing over there. Our next cost is the cost of the commissary, which is the same, which is the estimated cost of two hundred forty thousand dollars. And then a similar cost for amenities at this location, which is at an estimated cost of four hundred thousand dollars.
You don't need a restroom there?
Yeah, I was going to set that down at the bottom. We don't, we wouldn't need a restroom at this location, because it's already proposed in the CIP for twenty twenty-seven as the Lake District restroom.
But if you add that restroom in, that's going to be around four hundred thousand dollars. So that's pretty much the same, right?
Well, it, it will still be cheaper, but yet if you were to incorporate it, it would be similar, because the, the cost would be similar. But this restroom is already proposed to be in the CIP, and if you added in the previous, it would be an additional cost of an extra four hundred thousand dollars. And our total estimated cost for this project is seven hundred one thousand dollars. On this slide, we talk about the pros and cons of the Nature's River location, beginning with the pros. It has the scenic river views. It revitalizes the use of underused land, and then it also promotes the revitalization of downtown Beaumont. And then some of the cons of this location is that it has a higher construction cost, it has limited accessibility and visibility. There's limited parking in this location. You have the railroad encroachment and permits needed before the construction. And then also, this area is an area that's prone to flooding. And moving on to the pros and cons of the Rotary Park Event Center location, beginning with the pros. There's increased foot traffic from, from neighboring facilities at this location. It has overall lower construction costs. And then there's a lower risk for flooding in this location. And then some of the cons to this location is that by you adding the food truck park, it could be increased traffic or parking strain. It's going to be a reduction in green space, because we will be constructing over area that's currently green as of right now. And then with the addition of a food truck park, it could add a lot of noise and then cleanliness concerns, because there are going to be food vendors over there certainly, food in that area. On this slide, I did a comparison of both of the locations using a comparison criteria, and I'm just going to read as follows. Our first comparison criteria is visibility. I rated Nature's River City Hall location as having poor visibility, because if you're an individual and you're standing on Main Street, it's going to be difficult for you to see what's going down in that lower elevation area in the Nature's River location. And then the Rotary Park Event Center location, it's on street view, so it's very easily to see as you're riding past or walking up to the area, so it has better visibility. The next criteria is foot traffic. We have Nature's River location is having low foot traffic as of right now. It's kind of like a overflow parking lot, so it's not a lot of foot traffic down there. But I mean, obviously, that could have changed with the opening of Riverfront Park. There should be some more individuals down there. But as of right now, for what I noticed and noted, that it has a low foot traffic area as of right now. And then the Rotary Park Event Center location, it has moderate foot traffic, because there are currently events going over there. You got the skate park, the event center, Lakeside Center, and individuals over there enjoying the park setting. So it has a moderate. Construction costs. We have the Nature's River location that's having a higher construction cost. And then obviously, the Rotary Park, it also has a, construction cost is being moderate, because it's moderately cheaper than the Nature's River location. The next criteria would be accessibility. We have the Nature's River as having accessibility as being difficult, because as of right now, there's no ADA access to have access to the Nature's River location. In order for individuals to be able to get across there, the only way they can access that is by going down the stairway behind City Hall behind us, which is only stairs. There's no ramp. Or not, or if not there, you would have to walk or roll over the railway, which is out in the parking lot. And if you weren't able to do that, you would have to drive over there. So if it was an individual trying to access the area who was on foot, and they had ADA issues, they wouldn't be able to access that area, as well as it's an active rail track. So if fire AMS or police need to get over there, if there was a train blocking it, they would have no access to get into the area. So I'd not rate it that as being difficult accessibility. And then Rotary Park Event Center location, I was rated as being easy, because like I said, it's a street level. Individuals can easily access the park or the amenity as of right now. Proximity to businesses. This was rated as being fair for both locations, because both locations are relatively have proximity to different businesses. And then the, the last criteria that was rated was on parking availability. The Nature's River City Hall location, it has, it being down, is having limited parking accessibility, because the only parking is typically right here in City, City Hall. And as of a day like today, it was really challenging trying to find parking when you came over here. And on a lot of other days, it's challenging, where people have to park on the back of the fencing or the green area. So it's really challenging finding parking on a regular day. So I assume if you were to add an additional amenity down here, especially with the potential opening of Riverfront Park, it would add to the congestion of parking here. And then Rotary Park Event Center location, we have it as having ample parking, because there's plenty of street parking, and there's also parking lots where individuals can park. When they would be assessing the, the amenities in those areas. At the beginning of the month, I was actually able to have a food truck focus group, where I reached out to some of the food truck owners in the community to get some of their feedback on what their thoughts was on the potential of a food truck park here, and they had a lot of positive things to say. Didn't need to, one of them say either of the proposed locations were one of their favorite, but these are some of the things that they did mention. And when it came to location considerations, they said that they wanted an area that had high traffic with good visibility. One of the things that stood out to me is they said that food trucks go to where the people are. They don't, people don't come to the food trucks. So typically, they want to be in a place where it's higher traffic, where they can come and, and catch those sales of pedestrians being at a place for an extended amount of time. Now, as far as operational needs, the things that they said they desire would be access to utilities such as water, electricity, wastewater disposal. Shaded areas was important, places for patients to sit, and they also wanted to ensure that it would be a restroom facility there that they could access while running their business. Another one of the concerns was on cost and management concerns. They had emphasis on affordable rental fees and transparent pricing. And then they were really curious about who would be managing the food truck park, if, if you guys went on and decided you want to move forward with it. And then also, community and atmosphere. They wanted to be a vibrant place that was well taken care of, clean, and they wanted it to be a place where they felt safe at, because they would be storing their food trucks there. So they wanted to ensure that their things would be safe when it was stored there potentially overnight. All right, on this, on this slide, we're going to discuss some of the funding scenarios for the food truck park, because no matter what's a location, if you decide that you want to move forward, if it's the councils were to move forward with the development of the food truck, it's going to be a substantial capital investment. So these are the different funding scenarios that we have in funding this, beginning with the first one, which is city-funded. And this would be the city would fund the entire project by issuing debt, COs, certificates of obligation. Our second funding scenario would be a public-private partner relationship, which is called a P three, was a collaboration between a public and private developer. And then another option would be a private development, where the food truck park would be developed and funded by a private investor. And I'll discuss a little more of these options on the next couple of slides. City-funded. City funds will issue debt to fund the project. It's usually in the form of certificates of obligation, COs, which is a type of municipal bond that local governments use to raise money for capital projects. Some of the pros of this scenario is that it's, it's quicker access to funds, because the city is funding it. And then also, since it's debt issued, it spreads the project cost over time. And then some of the cons of this scenario is that it's a long-term risk. So if the park doesn't generate the expected revenue that it's supposed to, the city could, could struggle trying to repay its debt. And after speaking with comparable cities and doing research on comparable cities, this is the most uncommon scenario that cities our size use when And after speaking with comparable cities and doing research on comparable cities, this is the most uncommon scenario that cities our size use when proposing a food truck park. So it's something that they typically don't do. I think out of the cities that I spoke to, none of them were were city funded. Our next funding scenario is a public-private partnership, which is a collaboration between the municipality or city and a private developer. Where typically the municipality where may provide land or incentives such as infrastructure. And then the private developer, they pretty much handle the financial risks and of the development. And typically, they're gonna be responsible for the operation and management of the food truck park. So some of the pros to this approach is that by being a partnership, the city still has oversight and control over designs and operations. So we still have a hand in when we're designing this project. Some of the pros that the private partner, they take on most of the most of the financial burden. And also by them taking on most of the financial burden, that's a reduced burden on the taxpayers. And when you're working with a private partner, they have more expertise in these type of projects. And then also, one of the pros is that through neighborhood empowerment zone development incentives such as tax abatement, fee waivers, and expedited permit review can help move the process on. Now, some of the cons to this funding scenario would be less direct revenue for the city because we will have a partner in this business adventure. Or and also, some of these partner partnerships could be complex. So they require require special structuring and negotiation and to ensure that the profit sharing is being split properly and financed. And then also, the city has less control over the day-to-day operations and long-term direction of the food truck park when you when you're working with a partner. And then one of our last funding scenarios would be a private development. The food truck park would be privately developed and operated without municipal investment. Typically, the city would lease the land, but the private development would would assume all associated costs and risks. So some of the pros to this funding scenario is that there's no city investment. So the city doesn't provide any financial backing or is not being paid with taxpayer funds. It's a reduced risk as well because the risk of the project failing typically rests specifically with the private developer. And then you still share the opportunities for the potential of the revitalization. Because if this project does good, you're still gonna reap the benefits of the project revitalizing the specific area. And also, it's the neighborhood empowerment zone development incentives, which include tax abatement, fee waivers, and expedited permit reviews, which could prompt more responses or more interest from those private developers. And some of the cons to this funding scenario is limited limited control. The city will have less control over the design and overall direction of the food truck park because it's being specifically developed by that private developer. And then the public benefit is uncertain because if the food truck park doesn't succeed, then the city, we may not reap the economic benefits if it was to succeed, so. On this slide, I'm gonna discuss the recommendations and the directions of the food truck park. My recommended location or the recommendation from staff is we would recommend a Rotary Park location due to the location having a lower overall construction cost. And it's and it will be located in an area that's less prone for flooding. But in order for us to move forward, we really need direction from council on if you would like to move forward with the food truck park. And if you would like to move forward with the food truck park, what location you would like the food truck park to be at so we can engage with a design firm? Because we do have funding to begin the design this year. And what would be the funding scenario for this for this project?
Councilman Turner?
So if we go with a P three or private partnership, will we, I don't, will we, I don't see a need for us to do a design. If we did a P three, maybe the design phase could come from the private developer. Is that an option?
That would be correct, yeah, we would work directly with them. If it's a private, then we probably wouldn't, you know, work directly with them. But I mean, it could be something we could put out in RFP that we will have some type of design control or some type of input on the design.
Me personally, I would support a P three where we have a we have somewhat say so. So we can actually monitor the image and what we want going on in our in the food truck park, especially if it's gonna be on city property. Maybe a long-term lease with with options to get out if someone isn't performing and give somebody else an opportunity. My my second thing is even the stipulations of the council, we would probably need to be on the same page on what all we would allow to be in the food truck park. I know it's a food truck park, but I've been to places in Miami and and other areas where these food truck parks serve alcohol and different kind of beverages. So I think as a council, we kinda need to be on the same page on direction if we wanna go public sector or a P three partnership. I just prefer to let the private sector take on that investment and that responsibility.
Councilman Getz?
I gotta write on the cocktails of Councilman Turner on this because P three does seem to make more sense to me. And that way, you involve people in the private sector that have experience and expertise that are knowing what they're doing with regard to the food truck industry. The other thing is is the location. I am adamantly for it being down on the river. But I would be opposed to having the alcohol and loud music right there by the by the kids in the Rotary Park. You talk about visibility. Let's let's think about the visibility from the river and the boating traffic. One of the things that I first envisioned about doing something like this was to be able to drive people to the Nature's River. How many years have we talked about how we have the river there as our greatest resource that we don't use? This would be another time where we missed out on that opportunity if we locate it over by the Rotary Playground. We, you know, the boat traffic, people would see the food truck park, they would pull off. I'm talking about motor pleasure boats. They would pull off and dock and they could come over there. The location is far enough away from anything so they they could have music, wouldn't bother anybody. You know, it's it's people like the water. I mean, you know, they would be able to be there and enjoy the ambiance of the river, the revitalized and brand-new Riverfront Park. I walk down. A hotel potentially in the future would also be a place where you could have walking along the new sidewalks in Riverfront Park all the way down to the food truck park from the hotel. It would be a nice, a nice walk along the riverfront to come down to the food truck park and maybe get something for dinner, a nice beverage, or listen to some music. I'm all for it if it's at the riverfront. I would not be for it if it was put right there. And you talked about propensity for flooding. How many times has it actually flooded? I know it flooded during Harvey, but other than that, how often does that parking lot flood?
It also flooded during Ike.
And those are those are two.
Twice in eighteen years, seventeen years.
Yeah, okay, twice in seventeen, those are monumental events. And I know climate change is is out there, but you know, the thing about a food truck park is that, hey, if it's flooding, you know it's coming and the food trucks can move. The rest of the infrastructure could be designed to be hardened against flood events. And you know, that that would have to be taken into account.
Councilman Durio, then Councilman Philshaw.
Thank you. Using, based on the new FEMA data, it is in the hundred-year flood zone, subject to three to five feet of flooding. There's that famous photo from Hurricane Ike with the conics box submerged in that parking lot, which it was close to the hundred-year event, but not quite maxed out. We're trying to determine if this is still actually also in the floodway, which does have insurance implications. And then the construction standards do change if it is in the floodway. And so that's where you have your breakaway improvements and such.
Thank you.
Just a few questions. On one of your renderings, I saw six or seven food trucks. And on this one, right here at the Rotary Park, I see only three. Is that, will it be able to accommodate more than that or y'all just did that for the renderings or?
We just, we just did that for the rendering. And I think one of them is is actually probably covered by the the commissary here. But as mentioned, they're just renderings until we work with a design firm, you know, we won't be able to sure up how much. But I think when we initially spoke about it, I think it was maybe a max of seven. So when we would actually go through the design phase, we would ensure that it would accommodate as many food trucks as as we would want. But I think the number we spoke about was a seven, but we just put a couple there just to kinda get people a visual.
With the size of the commissary and and everything that's inside of it depend on how many food trucks we're planning on using it?
You know, what type of amenities, the confirm the location where, you know, what type of amenities, the confirm the location where it would be would be at. Then that would be something that probably could be discussed at a later time. Like permitting is another reason that that's one of the areas that's being recommended by staff.
Either one of y'all are councilmen?
Well, I I I believe both locations have their positives. But I I I do see the river being a better pole to allow us to work with Crockett Street also. And well, I just, I I like the river and I like the P three.
Councilman Neil?
I have no comment.
Quick question for clarity. If we we were to look at a P three or a private, which I know everybody's leaning towards a P three, again, that'd be a request for proposals, correct? Would it be a good option to include? Wanted to present. If. Somebody that's willing to participate in this. So in terms of where they'd like for it to be, and then a lot of these other costs aren't a factor for us. I mean, it would be a land lease and and whatever agreement we made with them to invest. But and and I'm I'm certainly don't have a problem with a P three or the private either. So but would that be the next step as a request for proposal?
Yes, yes, sir.
And would it be too broad if you offered two locations?
No, you you certainly could in the RFP documents say, you know, in your proposal, would you prefer this location or that location? And then, you know, I'll obviously, the city would ultimately decide, you know, if we wanted to talk them into or out of another location. But you could certainly include that in the in the in the document.
Right, and I would think the restroom at the event center, e- even though it's in the CIP, we probably need a bigger one than we would need down at the river. So if we were gonna have the food truck, that's just for thought, but that, you know, that might be a part of. So I, you know, but I I think both locations also I don't have a problem with. So I would say it would, especially if you had a private partner wanting to do it, what they were looking at would be important.
Councilman Durio?
Are either one of these locations within our TERS to where some of that funding may be able to be used?
Well, they're both in the TERS, but it's not an eligible project listed in the projects, so.
We would have, council will have to amend the project schedule to include this particular project. But yeah, Mr. Boone is correct. They're both in the TERS, but you know, we would only be able to use those TERS dollars for infrastructure improvements.
Councilman Getz?
But a lot of this expense would be infrastructure improvements. And so just simply amending the project list for the TERS could be, you know, done without any big deal, right?
That's correct. Yeah, that could be done at one council meeting.
Right, and again, on the restroom, I understand that we had put the restroom into the capital improvement plan or citizens improvement plan for the park. But those those are still actual dollars. And so those actual dollars are going to be spent, whether it be down at the river or at the riverfront, at the at the Rotary Playground Park. And when you put those, that four hundred thousand dollars, the cost difference is almost negligible. So again, like Councilmember Samuel said, the riverfront is something we have been just trying to really do something with for decades. And to miss on an opportunity would be, in my my opinion, short-sighted.
Thank you, Councilman Getz, Councilman Turner.
And and lastly, Mr. Boone, staff, Mr. Mr. City Manager, on that P three, I just encourage you to let our private developers get creative if they, you know, may wanna be. I don't want us to get so caught up in it being one way, you know, I just wanna kinda give them their freedom, especially with them making that development to kinda think outside the box. Even if it's a little bit outside of what we're looking for, I just wanna be open-minded to what they may offer. You know, some people might think of maybe one of those food halls with the patios. It's still a food truck park, but you know, it's something inside, outside. So I just wanna make sure we don't limit them, especially if they're putting the investment dollars in it.
Sometime, Councilmember, that's the beauty of a of proposals, they can bring that to you and their imagination can run wild if it is if we may, so that'd be good.
Councilman Neil?
Yeah, could your commissary and the bathrooms not be built up on higher ground and kept out of the floodplain? And then everything else could be almost like a breakaway. I mean, talking artificial turf and some tents.
Exactly, because even when it flooded down there in the Lower Basin, I don't think it reached all the way back up to where that cinder block structure currently exists. It didn't get that far, the waters didn't get that far up.
If you built that stuff on this side of the railroad track, you wouldn't even need to go through the lift station or all those other permits.
Where exactly?
The backside of the parking lot where everybody parks.
This side of the tracks.
Yeah, up up in the City Hall parking lot.
What you saying is?
That's where we were talking about.
You'll have.
Down in the lower area, but I'm saying build.
Put the commissary up on this side? That be sufficient, Mr. Coleman? If you have the food truck park rate y'all thinking and have the commissary up here, the food trucks still gonna have to move to come dump their gray water. So they still would have to go back and forth. So the ideal location would be where the commissary and the food truck park is on the same grounds. The whole idea behind the food truck park, the food truck parks don't have to move.
Well, you could still put a lift station in then and pump it up.
We can, I'm just saying, if you move it up, then you have to make some more revisions to allowing the food trucks to.
So the the commissary could be up higher, but that's not where you, is that where you dump your gray water at the commissary?
As well as store your food and prepare your food is in the commissary.
You couldn't dump it at the bathroom? I'm not saying dump it in the toilet, but I'm saying put a, I'm saying put a grease trap in down low and tie it into the same septic system. Overcomplicate it, Mike.
It's something to consider.
Can I ask it a different way? Would a food truck truck itself be piped into the commissary or would it go straight to the lift station?
To the lift station after a grease trap.
Yeah, it's gotta be a grease.
Run a gravity to the grease trap and then from the grease trap to the lift station. You don't want the grease in the lift station.
No.
No, 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 I I know, I'm just trying to get how to, and of course, grease traps are a requirement.
Well, with that, do y'all have sufficient guidance to look at an RFP? All right. And yeah, timeline on the RFP with a.
I think thirty days, thirty days, maybe.
This is something we can begin to work on and not gonna report back, pop said our next session.
We got a meeting in a week, so you can let us know when you.
I think thirty days might be a little short. Sixty days.
Yeah, sixty would probably be a good, so I can, you know, maybe work with planning and economic development or maybe putting something together or figuring out, you know, how we could work something out.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, you did a good job.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right. So with that, we're gonna have council member comments, and I'll start with you, Councilman Neil. Councilman Samuel. Councilman Philshaw.
Just congratulations to Westbrook, Quentin Thomas Jr., and to Molly, three great things today. Congratulations to all three.
Yes, thank you. Councilman Turner?
Yes, I know during the presentation, I had asked about, you know, some of those buildings and the crime. I I think the police department may have had time to kinda look into it, just for clarity, since we talked about it. If you don't mind, Mr. Manager, can somebody come speak to that?
Yeah, Chief.
Plackett.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, specifically to what Mr. Flanagan spoke to, we, I checked, there were no reports that we received from the weekend regarding the Mildred Building. There was a break in at the Redemption Church. Um, it looks like the building was probably left mistakenly unsecured. Um, someone wandered in and they ended up taking nothing but some coffee creamer that was on a, on a stand. So officers went out, made a report, we have a description, that's about it, but we're, we're working that case, but nothing on the Mildred Building.
Okay, cool, I just wanted to clarify that.
And I had heard from Pastor Ellis, he, they were supposed to be filing a report today. Somebody had gotten into their new construction, they didn't do any damage from what he reported, but they got on Instagram and created a reel. And one of their members saw it, so they were gonna be, uh, because they were interested in pursuing that, uh, and I see one of the members shaking their head back there. So uh, this is, this is something that did occur and, and they are gonna report it, but I don't, my understanding from uh, Pastor Ellis is I don't think there was any damage that they were aware of at this time, but.
This, the, the actual report was actually from Wednesday with the coffee creamer incident.
Okay.
And uh, they reported no damage then, they think maybe the door was mistakenly left un.
And I think this was Monday night, perhaps, this past Monday.
Yes, sir.
Or Sunday night. I don't know.
But, um, Chief, in your opinion?
Yeah, they're.
A major problem with break-ins in downtown Beaumont?
So we've, we've been through this several times as, as y'all know, and I've uh, actually presented to y'all before. I don't have the numbers in front of me, I can tell you that as far as reported crime in downtown, the numbers are, are very low. Um, that, that has held true for several years. Uh, obviously we see areas of graffiti, but when building owners don't report that to us or when break-ins aren't reported, then we have no record of it. That's how we build our, um, our, our patrol tactics, that's how we decide where we're gonna allocate resources or by the numbers of reports that we get in. So if we don't get reports, then to, you know, it appears that, you know, so another place may be more um, deserving of allocation of manpower. With that being said, the police station is downtown, so there are police officers back and forth all the time. Uh, every shift changes at the police station, all of uh, you know, we do most of our business out of that facility. So there's always police officers downtown and, and, you know, I had met last year with the downtown uh, development committee. I worked with the chairman, Mr. Bruceard, and presented a, a multi-step phased-in plan for all property owners in downtown. And, and what uh, they could do to assist, well, first of all themselves, but second of all, us in assisting them. That phased-in plan included number one, securing their properties. That has to be the first step, and I don't mean, you know, piece of plywood leaned up against the door, I mean, actually securing their properties. Then doing minimum, a minimum amount of work to get their buildings up to a, a, a code, a level of code that they can have power and water turned on, at least on bottom floors. Once they have power and water, they have fire suppression, they have fire alarms, they have security alarms. And cameras, they're able to install cameras, which would be the next step. So that uh, when crime does occur, one, we get a report of it, two, there's something that we can respond to. And um, as you know, you know, downtown, we have a lot of foot traffic, especially with the, with the skate park and everything, there are kids. So we know things happen downtown, but if we don't have complainants calling us, then it's very difficult for us to respond to that. Even if it's not, even if it's reported after the fact, then we have the stats for that. So to answer your question, reported crime is low, but we are aware that there's, there's more minor crimes that occur. You know, that, that go unreported, but at the end of the day, we have, we have to make manpower allocation decisions. And that's done, you know, by the number of reports of crime that we have.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna give Councilman Turner his time back, and then it'll be Councilman Getz, Councilman Duria.
You got a question, I don't want to make him have to sit down.
I just agree that property crimes is what's, what you see downtown, you don't have a lot of violent crime downtown, but you do have property.
You do have property, you do have some property crime, but there's, there's no reported violent crime. Violent crime, if it's occurring, it tends to get reported. Uh, property crimes, you know, not so much if the property owner doesn't want to mess with it, if it's a vacant building, it's more trouble than it's worth. But we have, you know, we've tried to work with all of the is, uh, business and property owners downtown and um, some we have success with.
Thank you.
All right, and just another kudos to uh, Quentin Thomas and, and his dad and the whole Lionheart Boxing Community, you know, just seeing a young man from this area be this successful at an early age is, is much appreciated. And I encourage everyone to come out and sho- celebrate Westbrook, uh, you'll get an announcement later this week, uh, that showing up would a celebration to be. So I just encourage the whole community to come out and support those young men. And Ms. Molly, congratulations, congratulations. Yeah, I appreciate everybody who's doing everything, uh, Demi and staff, uh, it was a thorough thing you guys did today, you kind of been on it. I just encourage us to continue to try to stay positive and work together. We as a council, we're gonna make tough decisions and be forced to make tough decisions, but let's try our best to be business friendly to as many people as we can, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Getz.
Kudos to Quentin Thomas, uh, I'm not sure what the difference is between Silver Gloves and Golden Gloves, but uh, you know, it sounds impressive either way. Um, also to Westbrook, uh, winning a state championship is huge, it's very difficult, so looking forward to celebrating with them on Friday. And I also want to give a shout out to the Symphony of Southeast Texas for having one of the best pops concerts that I've seen in a long time this past Saturday night. Um, it was rhythm and blues soul, um, it was a great, great, great music, music that everybody uh, has heard. And uh, it was really nice to see our city manager there with his wife, and uh, we really, really enjoyed that show, so kudos to them as well.
Councilman Duria?
Yeah, I wanna, um, Mr. Marshburn came up and spoke about us being business friendly and our codes being uh, hard. And so did um, Mr. Conizaro, and um, I just want to know, can y'all give us a report or comparisons as far as our codes compared to other cities? If they are too hard or if we're not being business friendly, if somebody could give us a report on that, so, so we can know for sure.
I second it if you want a workshop, I second it.
All right, give me workshop. Um, also, uh, we talked about replacing all those old worn out water mains. Well, a lot of our infrastructure is worn out, but people don't want to spend the money to replace them, they just want us to patch them. So that's, that's why we not, haven't replaced them, and that's why we still being reactive instead of proactive. Uh, I'm, I'm all for that, but all that stuff really costs, and I think, well, anybody up here know, I said we should spend the money, but I don't get, uh, some people don't agree with that, but that's, if we wanted, uh, that also draw more people here, we have brand new infrastructure, you know? And one other thing, doggone social media again, can you, can somebody, or maybe you, Mr. Manager, inform me about the parade fees for the Fourth of July Parade over there in the Calderwood area?
Calder Place, yeah.
Calder Place, I'm sorry.
Chris, you just won't let us go home. Uh, uh, let me say, that's one of the best events for us, I, I really enjoyed that event. I participated a couple of times, it's been a joy to go over there and participate in it, uh, for sure. Um, and with Ms. Leonard over there, and I think most of you up here, Taylor, and May I know, one time we participated in it together, been great. So, so we've, we've worked with her over the years and, and I talked with the Saturday, I called on the phone and talked to her. She says she's been doing it about twenty years, a long time, you know, kind of got it from the Austin area. They do those little walking parades over there, and we did them where I lived. And um, you know, uh, PD has worked with her over the years and, and I think over the last several years, it was on, she was on the charge, the permit fee. And uh, maybe the barricade fee or something, whatever it's called. But the logistics of it falling this time is on a holiday, which is a short, which, uh, and, and Jason can come speak for PD. That were their short staff and they had to work up a cost estimate that was totally different. Um, I also say city manager has nothing to do with permits, okay? Uh, I, I didn't, I don't have a policy on permits, uh, that we do anything. I do, after it's all worked out, they might come to me saying, okay, will you waive a fee, will you lessen a fee, things like that, I'll do that. On this one, I didn't hear about it, to Councilmember Neil did forward an email to me one night, and I told him I'd be glad to work with them. I, I'd be happy, cause uh, I worked with Ms. Leonard on the Halloween, you know, cause when, when I first talked with her about the Halloween event, I asked her what does she want, and she told me what she want, and I just said, we'll do it. And that was just, she said, just reduce it by half, and, and so we were glad, so whatever they wanted, we cooperated. It was easy, an easy cooperation, you know, because it, they're great events, they're great events. But this one, the logistics are different and what PD worked up the cost estimates, because it's the, on the Fourth of July, actual holiday when, when we're short staffed and, and, and we don't have a traffic patrol that normally worked it as a part of their daily routine. Uh, that won't be, uh, be working that day, but I, I let Jason get that part, but it, it's just, it was kind of like a storm there. But we'll, we'll work with them anyway we can.
Okay, so I think maybe the best thing to do is just go through what the process is. For those of you that don't know, when, when someone wants to do a parade or any event that requires block closures or street closures, anything like that, um, they fill out a, um, an application for, to request a permit. The way the ordinance is set up for those type of events, those go first to the police department traffic unit. They review it, they look at it, they say, okay, geographically, they look at, you know, traffic issues, um, you know, where is it? How big of an event is it, how many people? Uh, they look at ingress and egress into the, into the route, they look at, you know, are there residences in the route where, you know, people are gonna maybe need to get in and out of their homes while the street closure is in effect. And uh, they come up with a number of officers that's needed to safely um, do this type of event. And I understand that um, it is sticker shock, I get that, it's, but we need, once we're involved in it, we need to make sure that it's done correctly and safely. If you get on your phones right now and Google um, vehicle crashes into a parade, you can see, you know, you have the Wisconsin event, you have the New Orleans event from uh, uh, New Year's Eve, you have a Christmas parade that had problems, there's a bunch of them. So once we're involved in it, we have to make sure it's safe because we have a responsibility in it now. So we make sure that we can safely and securely uh, get that neighborhood locked down so that they can do the event. The next question that has come up was why does it take so much time, because it's a twenty or thirty minute parade? Well, we have to get the officers into work, we have to get them briefed, we have to get them out there, then they set the barricades up. Then they have to go and make sure all the streets of the neighborhood are clear inside the closure. Then everybody has to line up, then they do the parade, then, you know, everybody mills around, they go back to their houses. Then we have to go break down the barricades and get traffic flowing again, then you have to go back and secure all their equipment. So the difference this year and the last few years is, uh, our traffic unit, they work a four-ten schedule, so the, half the units off on Monday, half the units off on Friday. Uh, it is a holiday, so we've had people who are on, already on approved leave, they want to take the holiday off. So we have to call people in to work over on this one, much like the Halloween event that she does. So uh, she was told that, you know, we wouldn't be able to do it on duty, because like I said, the last few years, we've just covered it on duty for her. And um, so we repaired the, uh, prepared the estimate, sent it to her, and then the manager agreed to only charge half. And that's where we are now, so, and keep in mind, it is also on July fourth, so uh, it's uh, contractually, the officers get a holiday rate.
So the officers that were coming in to work that parade, they're actually, are they on duty, working overtime, or are they working side jobs?
They're on duty, working overtime.
And contracted, you have, because it's a parade, they get time and a half plus another time and a half?
They get a holiday rate, but there, it wouldn't matter if they were on city time or an extra job, there's a holiday rate for each one.
So what's?
It's an overtime rate.
Okay, so, cause I think, so that's, when you figured that out, that's, that's the rate that you came up with? The, some people saying it's five thousand dollars?
The total, the total event, uh, so the officers, the few officers that are working that day are doing it as part of their duties. So they're not on the, uh, the estimate, the ones that are on the estimate with the barricades and everything, um. You know, we have to touch base also with other ci- city departments to see if they have a part in it, if there's gonna be a cleanup or anything like that. So uh, our traffic sergeant prepared the estimate, and it was just shy of five thousand dollars. And so half of it would have, I think it came out to like twenty-three something.
So y'all were a- able to reduce it by half?
That was, yeah, that was done very early on, if my.
Yeah, that was, you know, that was when, when, you know, when it finally got to my desk, it's like, uh, they wanted a whatever discount on the parade. And I know that we have an agreement to do half on the Halloween parade, so it's like, well, will they do half, you know, that was the assumption. Let's do the same deal we doing on the Halloween parade and see if that happens. So that, that went out the door without any discussion, it was just, okay, let's, yeah, let's give them a discount. It was more about giving them a discount than the amount, because I didn't even have the price at the time. I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't aware, it had been sent to me, but I didn't look at it, I, I just was moving. Did that answer your question before?
I guess it did, cause really the reason I asked, cause people get so ugly and nasty on, on social media and want to throw our manager on the bus and just attacking him for no reason, when this is a process that we go through, you know?
So the, the important thing to know is that anybody that wants to know what the process is, this is in ordinance. Uh, you can look up the parade ordinance, it's right there, I think it's twenty, Sheree, help me out, maybe twenty point oh six or something. But you can look it up and uh, it spells out, it spells out the process. And the police department provides an estimate. Um, the way the ordinance is worded is for nonprofit parades, which this is, then the city can determine how much of that they pay. And it's the way it's always been done, it's the way it was done before the manager got here, and um, the police department can't say you can do it for free. We, we don't have that authority, but we provide the estimate and um, you know, the police department does decide what the necessity for safety is.
One of the, I guess the main reason is so, so much now is cause it's on a holiday and they get holiday pay contractually.
It's different because in the past, we were working, so we didn't have to call people in for this one. This is much more akin to the same person does a big Halloween event, and that's more what we've done for Halloween because it's, it's, it's in different hours. Okay. So, but normally we just get the traffic unit to run over there and do it for her, and the case this year is that it's on holiday and those people aren't available.
Would it be less expensive if we got streets to put up the barricades instead of the police?
No, because we, the police have to be there either way, we just pick the barricades up and put, all the streets delivers them.
Yeah.
Usually the day before and drops them, so we put them up, we take them down, but we've got to be there one way or the other. The, the big deal is that you've got to have enough police officers there to make sure that no one gets into the route. Just a couple of months ago on a parade downtown, we had an officer run over, luckily he wasn't hurt, because someone got into the parade route. So again, once we're involved in it, we're responsible.
I think it's either the last MLK or the one before that, somebody came, came going the wrong way down Highland Street during the parade.
So, you know, again, our paramount concern is the safety of the citizens, there are a lot of kids out at this parade, we don't want to see anything happen. Um, you know, and I've seen all the comments, some say it's overkill, and it's easy to say that until something happens.
All right. Yeah, and, and it happens, there were several people killed in a parade in Austin. All right, yeah, and it happens. There were several people killed in a parade in Austin a couple of years ago. God just ran through there and killed, killed people. So it's something that actually happens. But I'll, I'll say we, we have, it's not finished. We do, I have a meeting scheduled with Ms. Leonard, me, the police chief, Tracy Kinnick and my, either Jason or.
I'm sure Chief obviously will be happy.
Or Anderson, but we're gonna meet with her on the twenty-eighth. We're gonna go over there and we're gonna meet at the BISD building with her and discuss it and try to figure out ways to make it.
I'd just like to add one more thing. The, the unit that does this, our traffic unit, they, they plan over fifty events a year like this. They're very good at what they do. I have full confidence in them and they have a very good idea of what it, the minimum amount it takes to make sure that we can keep people as safe as we possibly can. And so, you know, they've been, they've been fussed at too, you know, publicly. And, and they have a job to do and they do, they do a very good job at it. They, like I said, they do this all year long for, for over fifty events. And so we understand that there's costs associated with it and we try to keep that down as much as, as possible. But there's a lot more to it than there appears to be on the face or that people realize.
All right. Thank you, Chief. It sounded like you was expecting that question.
I worked on it this week. I'll put it that way.
And I sent you an email right before this meeting, what, what, an email from, from Jason that talks about this.
All right, Councilman Durio, do you have, are you done?
I'm done, Mayor.
We got a six o'clock meeting coming up.
It's five o'clock.
Madam City Attorney. You got nothing. All right. Molly?
Not to keep us here any longer, but I did want to point out that regular agenda item number two is for a water line replacement project. So we're, we are working on these water line projects.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
Super quick, just a reminder, as campaign season ramps up, make sure the signs are out of the ride away. We have gotten a couple complaints. Those locations are Dowlin at Westgate, Lucas at Steelton near Smash Burger, over off of Feeling or along Feeling, and then also Walden and Major. I noticed that one this morning. So if you guys can just help out and let those who are, or let those who are setting those signs for you know.
City Manager?
Congratulations to Westbrook on what they did. I too, I did enjoy the symphony. It was an awesome program. I saw the mayor there too. It was great. Santa and I enjoyed it. And on the annual report, it gives some information about number feet of water line replaced, replaced. Pipe burst and was fifty-three thousand, so if you put that into miles, it's almost ten miles in a year. So the city is working diligently on infrastructure.
On the website. It's online. It's online.
Is it online?
Yeah.
Visible, or if anybody needs something, we'll get them to them and we'll post it online.
Certainly, it's been a full meeting and we're about to recess into executive session. Westbrook, incredible job. Quentin Thomas Jr. and Lionheart. Molly, thank you and certainly thank all our staff for the preparation that we, y'all had today and get ready for next Tuesday. So we recess into executive session now.